So I'd like to welcome everyone to today's meeting on November 10th and start with non-agenda public comment. And so we have Citizen, William Tall, and Jeanette Perez.
So Marnie Foster and John Lee Evans spearheaded the town hall to lobby for more money for schools using San Diego Unified District taxpayer money. Marnie Foster and John Lee Evans' views was allowed at the town hall, calling it information and inspiration. Lots of employees spent hours of staff time creating PowerPoints, principals in communications office sending email blasts, and flying in from Sacramento to sway parents and the public to support a heavier burden of taxes which will fall on the students of this district. This so-called information campaign is just a sneaky sneak attempt to put more taxes on our backs after years of stealing money from kids. Education money is being diverted to pay staff to create a marketing tool to gain the advantage for political issues. Richard Barrera said it, "This is a political issue." Superintendent Martin said, "Give me more money and I will commit to end the achievement gap," and she knows all the solutions. All she needs is more money. She has publicly stated there is no one-to-one correlation between funding and results, and the reports that are coming out from very respected groups bear that out. Now John Lee Evans and Marnie Foster have convinced Martin to use public resources to urge a vote for or against a political issue. Citizens need to question why educators are spending so much time coordinating these town halls instead of operating an education district. Why did Barrera state, "The legislators listen to the public, and we need to train the trainers." It's not about money, folks. It's about quality teachers. That's what gets us quality education. And when you state that we only get $9,000 and if you give me $3,200 more, we can do it all without presenting the other side, the waste of money in this school district by the millions and millions and millions. That's not right. You don't get to use my tax money against us. You're supposed to be using it to help these kids. We've got kids buying their own crayons because you guys don't provide that money. We've got kids buying their own musical instruments because you guys don't provide that money. But you've got money for these fancy PowerPoints and making posters and paying staff overtime to be running these town halls, hundreds and thousands of dollars. And it's a scam, folks. It's a taxpayer scam. And you shouldn't be participating in it. You're breaking several laws. Thank you.
Thank you again for giving me a chance for public comment. I'm going to leave some slips with you. You saw, you heard our hearing last week, and we had all the supportive volunteers. And this whole dream started when Therese saw one of my videos. And we have so many people that are helping us out, teachers that have nothing to do with the school, they just want to see it happen. A lot of people doing that stuff. And I just wanted to say that it was a pleasure showing you the strength, the community that's behind us and things like that. And I've heard some negative things come up, and I'm not going to put them as part of my talk tonight, but I just want to let you know that none of us are in this for any kind of a political gain or financial gain. It's from our hearts. We've done this, the nursery myself have done this for years, just to see smiles on kids and all. And so I just wanted to let you know, thank you for hearing us last week and all the green shirts and yellow suspenders. That was really sweet of them. And look forward to a wonderful Thanksgiving break with everybody, enjoying it, and looking forward to hearing you on the 1st of December before I go in for my surgery. And thank you for giving us this opportunity to present our school to the community in such a way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. My name is Jeanette Perez, and I am the parent of a student at ADEO Charter School and a teacher at the Charter School of San Diego, which is the same network as ADEO. I would like to thank you for listening to our students, parents, and staff at last week's meeting, as we shared with you how much ADEO has impacted our lives and the lives of so many others in San Diego. We appreciate your attention and consideration, and we look forward to partnering with you in the future to ensure this important school continues to thrive in San Diego. As a Charter School of San Diego teacher, I've had the privilege of working alongside the staff and teachers at ADEO. This coupled with my parent involvement compels me to speak on behalf of ADEO. I've seen firsthand how hard the staff at ADEO work to provide their students with personalized support services and rigorous coursework to get their students prepared on a path to high school, college, and the workforce. As a parent, I know how fulfilling it is to watch your child be excited to go to school and feel like they can succeed at the same level as their peers. I must emphasize that there are many unique reasons why students are not successful in the traditional setting. Too long of a list to speak of today. My daughter's story is just one of many. In the beginning of her ninth grade year, she had negative experiences that made it necessary for her to choose an alternative setting, school setting. That same year, her father, my husband, was diagnosed with terminal intestinal cancer. These emotional strains made it difficult for my daughter to succeed in a traditional setting. Her flexible schedule with ADEO was a godsend, as she was able to care for her father at home as well as discover a new level of learning. Before coming to ADEO, my daughter did not have college in her future. Now she is a senior and eager to go into a four-year college. Her passion for learning has blossomed at ADEO. My daughter is one of many success stories at ADEO. These are not just successes for the individual students and teachers, but also for the community at large. Thank you, President Foster, for sharing the impact ADEO had on your children at the last board meeting. The teachers at ADEO continue to put their all into giving San Diego's most at-risk students the chance to reach their full potential. I ask you to work with them to ensure these students have a public school option that lets them reengage with their studies, teachers, and the school environment, because their success is everyone's success. ADEO has been unanimously renewed twice. I ask that you continue the commendable history of support and vote to renew ADEO's charter at the December board meeting, December 1st board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our non-agenda public comments. And if we could please stand, we're going to have the Air Force JROTC color guard from Scripps Ranch present the colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Ready, go! Right, he, forth, who, forth, right, march, thus, 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 right, 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 thus.
Thank you, Scripps Ranch High School JROTC.
That's right, that's right. I would like to welcome everyone to today's broadcast on November 10th, 2015, regular board meeting with all but one board member present. John Lee Evans is absent today. If you wish to address the board during an agenda item, please make sure that you fill out a speaker's form at one of the exits and pass that to our board officer Cheryl Ward. Speakers on agenda items will have 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint, and we'll have 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint, and we just remind you to focus on issues and not individuals. Non-agenda testimony was heard at 5:08. And we are going to begin with a student presentation from Scripps Ranch High School Chamber Orchestra. And trustee Beiser, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, President Foster. I would like to present the Scripps Ranch High School Chamber Orchestra, representing the high school for the administration as vice principal, Antonio Gutierrez. And of course, our amazing Russell Shed is the band director. And then all of the students, come on in. And if we could please have the board take seats in the audience so we can enjoy this. And if we could also please pull up this screen in the back, please, thank you very much. Once again, the Scripps Ranch High School Orchestra, Chamber Orchestra.
So I'm just going to say a few words as they set up. So thank you, board members. Thank you, members of the San Diego Unified Community. My name is Antonio Gutierrez, and I've really had the honor of being part of the Scripps Ranch High School community for the last four months. I am the new vice principal there. And Mr. Beiser, thank you for really highlighting our programs at our school site. We had the ability to have our ROTC program present here. We also have an amazing CCTE program, College Career Technical Education. And at our school site, we also have an amazing visual and performing arts program. And our band director, Mr. Shed, he's going to say a few words, but he has been at our school site for, I believe, the last nine years. And he has built a program that is actually going to go to the next level of competition in two weeks over in, I believe, Orange County. And he has a band and choir program of about 200 people. And here he is lifting up this, but he's really dedicated and very, very excited to share some of our music with you. So as he sets it up, but thank you, Mr. Beiser again, thank you, board. And it's been a pleasure serving our students and our community. Thank you.
We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well.
We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay."
We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay."
Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Good evening. We have two selections for you. The first is one of our favorite songs we've ever performed throughout the years. It'll probably yours as well. The Irish theme from County Dariel, "Okay." Congratulations. Let's give Cynthia another hand. And Cynthia, don't, don't go too far. Um, next, I'd like to ask David to please join me at the podium. Um, David is a Campus Security Assistant at Mark Twain High School. David plans to use this scholarship award to continue his education as a math major at National University, as it is his lifelong dream to become a teacher. David's colleagues think he has already proven his effectiveness as a teacher through mentoring and tutoring students. David's interpersonal bonds with students help make him a great tutor and mentor for students, his colleagues say. David believes that while working with various after-school clubs and visiting classrooms during the school day, he finds himself more and more comfortable with tutoring and, in essence, teaching the fundamentals of mathematical problems to students. Thank you, David, for your service. Congratulations. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier, um, Kristi is ill tonight and cannot join us, but I would like to share, um, a little bit about her. We'll pretend. I know. Kristi is a school bus driver with the Transportation Department. Since beginning her career with the San Diego Unified School District, Kristi has developed a passion to work with students that goes well beyond her current duties. Kristi states, "My daily contact and relationships with students, especially with, uh, especially with special education students, um, that she has transported over the years. She has cultivated a keen sense of purpose and desire, uh, for, to teach each one." Kristi's colleagues describe her as a teacher and a learner who always, uh, realizes the opportunity to be the face, to be the face and friendly voice, uh, for students in, in the morning. Kristi currently attends National University to earn her degree in education. And Kristi, if you're watching, congratulations. We salute you. This is a big, this is a big hug from us. So, um, Lonnie Jones, can you join us? Lonnie has been employed at Miramesa High School as a Campus Security Assistant since 2002, and is a graduate of Lincoln High School. Woo-hoo, go Hornets! Um, Lonnie has planned, has plans to use this scholarship award to complete his studies at Miramar College, and then earn his teaching credential at a four-year university. Lonnie's colleagues admire his passion and integrity. One teacher writes, "His achievements and compassion are of the highest order, and there is no question that he will bring honor and distinction to the profession of teaching." Lonnie believes that with, with this opportunity, he will be able to not only better himself, but also show his students that with hard work, you can accomplish anything. Congratulations, Lonnie.
That's his ASV president.
You got a fan. It's going in the airboat tip.
All right. So, let's have the credit union ladies stand in the back.
Oh, so if you can see us?
Yeah.
Good. He's gonna hide behind someone.
No, one more.
One more?
Yeah, one more.
Okay. Should I get in the bathroom?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So next, we have, um, the United Way of San Diego Presi... Oh, in addition, oh, I'm sorry. In addition to thanking our recipients for their current service to our students, I'd like to point out that the Board President's Scholarship Program complements the work of the Teacher Pipeline Task Force, a joint undertaking with the District and the San Diego Education Association in developing a plan of action for cultivating highly effective and diverse teacher workforce. So, wanted to highlight that. Great, great partnership. And, um, on to B5.
At this point in time, I'd like to call point of order, President Foster. We haven't adopted the agenda yet, and so I believe that, that it would be in order for us to first adopt the agenda in whatever order we so desire, and then go on to B5 or whatever.
So, in, the order is, uh, B5, B6, and then to adopt the agenda?
Yeah, we have to adopt the agenda before we can do any items on the agenda. So, at, so that's my point of order.
Okay, alright.
So with that, I'd like to move the, that we adopt the agenda, moving item H2 to the front, then B5, B6, and then following the rest of the order of the agenda. That's my motion.
These two, okay. So we're gonna do the, the air conditioning, B4, B5, and B6? Okay. 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 So, can we please vote on moving?
On the motion, and then a speaker.
We have a speaker on the motion, okay. Oh, got you, okay.
Well, I read the, uh, posted agenda, and I don't understand what B6 is. Is it a proclamation? Are we proclaiming a National Family Day? Is it a resolution? Is it PTA recognition? Is it Crawford Parents Day? The agenda item does not properly describe to the public what this issue is about to be able to comment to the issue. I went to the computer in the lobby, and I found out that it's far more, um, detailed than you are describing. This needs to be removed from the agenda until it meets the legally required format. I looked on the official copy, I looked on the copy in here, and there is not sufficient information for the public to understand what it's about. It actually looks like people just threw a bunch of stuff into this resolution, which is now being moved because it's clearly not well thought out. And, y- you can't do it that way. You, you can't have this mess of an agenda and call it a, um, legal posting. So please remove B6 from the agenda and properly notice it.
Okay, thank you. General Counsel, do you want, would you like to comment on that, uh, before we adopt the agenda and move forward?
I'd like to take a look at it while you're adopting the agenda, and we get to that item, I'll advise.
Okay. So, please vote. Okay, that... Okay, that passes unanimously? And we're, uh, moving on to B5? H2, I'm sorry, air conditioning. Superintendent Martin, did you want to introduce H2?
Thank you. This is, the Board had asked us to come back with a plan, um, about expediting air conditioning across all of this, all of the remaining San Diego Unified Schools currently without air conditioning. So I'd like to invite up, uh, Lee Dolgoff, and he will be responding to the request of the Board, and so we can have that discussion this evening.
President Foster, members of Board, Superintendent Martin. This year has left little doubt that the earth in our region are experiencing the effects of climate change. The statewide drought is unprecedented. Each year, we seem to break records. This October, San Diego's 74.4 degree average monthly temperature set a new record. It was 7.7 degrees above normal. On September 15th, the Board passed a motion directing staff to develop a plan to equip every classroom with air conditioning. And tonight, I'm here to present the plan, uh, that you requested, and for your consideration and action. I'm gonna start by providing some background on air conditioning to discuss the plan, and the schedule, and the cost. Temperature, humidity, indoor air quality, all have physiological effects on the human body. Many studies have focused on the relationship between office work performance and temperature. There's also been a number of, um, scientific studies, uh, performed on how learning ability changes with temperature and humidity. Uh, studies such as those conducted at Lawrence Berkeley Laboratories and Kansas State University found that reading speed, reading comprehension, multiplication, and performance, and the performance of schoolchildren tend to be poorer at temperatures between 81 and 86 degrees Fahrenheit relative to 68 degrees Fahrenheit. There are also several journalers, uh, articles published by the Council of Educational Facilities Planners that support those findings. Studies indicate that students and teacher are most effective at temperatures between 68 and 74 degrees, when the room humidity is between 70, between 40 and 70 percent. Our district thermostat heating set point is 68 degrees, for reference, and our cooling set point is 75.5, with allowance for plus or minus one degree. EPA research has focused on the importance of indoor air quality and oxygen levels. Air conditioning systems need to reduce the CO2 levels and maintain oxygen levels, uh, using fresh makeup air. Uh, studies support a best practice of 25 cubic feet per minute per person in a classroom, or eight air exchanges per hour, and the state energy code requires, uh, 15 CFM per, per person. This, uh, this timeline illustrates the history of air conditioning, um, and really the challenge that we all inherited. Um, San Diego Unified grew significantly during the 50s and 60s, when few schools were air-conditioned as practice. Um, in the 70s, we started building schools with air conditioning. And then, in the 80s, uh, the district, um, adopted a policy to build schools without air conditioning, to conserve energy. In the, even in the late 90s, uh, inland schools like Scripps Ranch High School, that were performed here a few minutes ago, um, were opened without air conditioning. Designed, constructed, without air conditioning. In 1999, we conducted a climate study, uh, that measured temperatures in classrooms throughout the district, establishing three climate zones. Uh, Zones 2 and 3, at the time, were selected for future air conditioning when funding permitted. In 2001, the Board adopted a district policy, E4100, along with a site ranking list that aligned with those, uh, climate zones. But due to limited funds and Proposition MM at the time, the Board approved the use of passive measures, such as ceiling fans in the hottest classrooms. Uh, in 2008, Proposition S passed, and that, um, included air conditioning for schools in Climate Zone 3. In 2012, uh, the voters passed Proposition Z, that included air conditioning in Climate Zone 2. In 2013, this Board, uh, directed staff to expedite air conditioning in the hottest 2,000 classrooms, and shortly thereafter, the scope was expanded to include critical spaces. It is important to note that this Board and this administration have increased the percentage of air-conditioned classrooms from 40 to 70 percent over the past two years. Pretty remarkable. This plan will employ, uh, the successful fast-track design and procurement-construction approach that we used, um, to air-condition 2,000 hottest classrooms, uh, for the, over the past two years. Uh, the expedited air conditioning plan is made possible by using a, uh, template design with standardized systems, individual classroom rooftop, uh, package HVAC units. The air conditioning, and, and under this plan, the air conditioning installation is gonna be separated from the whole-site modernization projects and expedited. The work will be performed after school hours on weekends and vacations to minimize the impact on, uh, school operation. The plan will use competitively bid indefinite delivery indefinite quantity construction contracts, uh, like, just like H, the last 2,000 hottest classroom plan. These contracts facilitate large quantities of work on multiple school sites during a compressed timeframe. The schools are gonna be prioritized, uh, based on the climate study heat ranking that I mentioned earlier. Um, the planned whole-site modernizations that were scheduled to complete before 2018 will continue to receive their air conditioning within the context of the whole-site modernization project that were, as originally planned. The projects, these are, uh, this slide's really about, um, the fact that these projects are not simple plug-in retrofits. These are, this, the, uh, the significant air conditioning requires electrical service upgrades, includes transformers, switchgear, conduit, wiring. These, the electrical work, uh, makes, makes up a significant portion of this, of this project. These are not, um, temporary air conditioners. These are full-fledged, uh, air conditioning systems. We talk about air conditioning, we, you have talked about what spaces we're gonna air condition. So, this is a list of the, the types of spaces that qualify for air conditioning in accordance with our district standards. We have about 30,000 of these spaces in over 3,800 buildings, district-wide.
I'm glad you have that slide in here, Mr. Dolgoff, because that's a key question people ask, is what space, when you're bringing forward the proposal tonight, what spaces are we speaking about? Specifically, talk about classroom spaces in your next slide showing, um, Slide 10. What are the spaces without AC? It's important that everybody's clear on what we're, the spaces here, and the steps involved. Um, I think that's available for, for folks to see. What are the spaces without AC? What steps would be, um, involved for design, DSA, bid and award in construction? And then if you can go to Slide, Slide 12 around, when will air conditioning be installed? And how much will it cost? Guys, I know that's a question everybody's waiting for.
Okay. Okay. So, so, um, just to get, I, I also need to cover what, what, um, what schools are gonna be, um, expedited. Uh, but, but yeah, we'll, we'll get to the timeline as, as well. Um, so if you look at the Board Packet Attachment A, contains a list of traditional and charter schools that were designed under the hottest 2,000 classroom initiative to receive, uh, classroom and critical space air conditioning. So Attachment A, uh, uh, that list of schools, um, also includes schools that, um, receive air conditioning as part of their whole-site modernization during, um, that project. Attachment B are schools that will receive an accelerated air conditioning in classrooms and spaces with this plan. And then, um, there are some schools that are listed on the Attachment B list, are, there, there are some spaces where the schools, um, were not included in the previous authorized hottest 2,000 classroom initiative, or the critical space initiative. So all the, all the, um, the Attachment B schools will receive either air conditioning in classrooms or critical spaces under this plan. If, if approved, this plan will be implemented between 2016 and 2019. And during that time period, 15 schools will complete their scheduled whole-site modernization, uh, including air conditioning. So Attachment C lists all the schools that will receive the air conditioning as part of their whole-site modernization under this plan. As you mentioned, the project involves, um, design, DSA review, bidding, award, construction. It's a pretty complex, complex, um, plan. All of these phases of work are gonna be completed concurrently by four teams of architects, contractors, and project managers, uh, over the three-year period. Uh, this is a breakdown of the cost, uh, of this initiative. Uh, Phase 1A, um, these are actual costs. This was the hottest 2,000 classroom initiative that the Board authorized in February 2013. Um, these, this project is now complete, um, in terms of Phase 1A, it cost $110 million. The critical spaces, um, are currently being designed and will be installed, um, uh, air conditioning will be installed in 2016. The, the estimated cost of this phase is about 18 million. And then Phase 2, this is, consists of this plan to air conditioning all remaining schools and qualifying spaces. The estimated capital design and construction cost of Phase 2 is $204 million. And if you look at Attachment E, that contains the list of projects similar to the, uh, bond approved plan in, in June 2013. It also includes this expedited air conditioning plan as one of the projects. It also includes this expedited air conditioning plan as one of the projects. And you'll see that funds have been allocated under an Attachment E in the 2015 and 2017 bond issuance project list for the completion of the remaining qualifying spaces in Climate Zone Three, as well as expediting air conditioning for Climate Zones One and Two. The installation of the projects will be scheduled according to the heat rankings from the climate study. Now, if you compare Attachment E to the June 3 Board-approved project plan, you'll notice that in addition to air conditioning, we're accelerating a couple whole-site modernizations. All the changes in the June 3 plan that the Board previously approved are in bold font. One of the questions I've received is, you know, how are we able to expedite the air conditioning without impacting the overall schedule that was approved in June 3? Well, due to increases in property assessed valuation that received from the county in July and August, we were able to issue about $230 million in additional bonds this year than had been planned when we adopted that, the June 3 program plan. So this additional cash flow supports the air conditioning plan without delaying any of the previously planned whole-site modernization projects. And I'd like to thank the finance team, Jenny Selkell, and the team for their work on the finance plan that helped enable this. With this plan to air-condition schools, there's going to be a few compromises. As I mentioned earlier, Prop S and Z, the program did not budget to air-condition schools in Climate Zone One. We talked about Prop S, it was Climate Zone Three, Prop Z, Climate Zone Two. So if this plan is approved by the Board, schools in Zone One will need to fund the cost of air conditioning from their whole-site modernization budgets. So consequently, the schools in Climate Zone One will receive fewer quantities of other types of renovation and modernization scope in exchange for air conditioning. I'd like to focus on the whole project. So this is, we talked about the impact on general fund. We're always looking at ways of reducing impact on the general fund so that schools have more resources that they need. So what we did was, if you look at the current blended energy rate, which is about $0.26.4 per kilowatt hour, our estimated cost of electricity of this project, to run this project when it's fully built out, is about $2.8 million. To eliminate the utility cost impact, we have a plan to install $40 million of solar panels that will generate enough electricity to offset the air conditioning consumption and cost. The cost of, the cost of electricity obviously is going to be offset by the PV under the current rate structure. It should be noted that the PUC is also looking at the net energy metering rates and for solar energy producers, along with a lot of other issues. But under the current rates, we're looking at basically an offset with the solar that we planned. In addition to our whole-site modernization projects, we are going to install, through those whole-site modernizations, we're going to install installation and dual pane windows and other energy efficient measures to reduce energy consumption. And the only impact that this plan will have on the general fund is the annual cost of maintenance and equipment. So we're estimating about $1.4 million per year in annual maintenance costs. The initial year is going to require us to purchase about $750,000 in trucks, tools, and equipment. So the initial year will total about $2.15 million. I'd like to thank Drew Rollins and the PPO team for their help in developing the maintenance cost estimates and validating our electricity cost and consumption estimates that are included During the initial phase of the $40 million solar installation program, we plan to implement solar at 16 to 20 schools. And this solar will generate about $10.5 million kilowatt hours per year. And then the eight schools that are listed here will be installed in 2016, and we have another 8 to 12 scheduled for 2017. In accordance with prior Board direction, staff's currently also looking at, we're developing a professional services contract for a team of experts to develop a climate mitigation and adaption plan. That plan looks at the effect of electricity use on the environment. Well, so part of this plan, part of this air conditioning plan also, you know, I looked at, what is the impact on the environment? Because obviously, the environment's really what's causing the need for this. So the planned solar panels actually will offset 4,900 tons of CO2 emissions that's going to be generated by the need to electrify the systems. So therefore, the whole footprint of this air conditioning program is carbon neutral. And so that concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your leadership on this, and Drew Rollins for your leadership as well. Do any Board members have any comments or questions?
Well, first of all, I'd like to move approval of the
Second.
...item and just clarify that the item that we're approving includes the installation of the solar panels and the additional energy that we'd be receiving from our investment in solar, so that we would have a neutral carbon offset.
That's correct.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. President Foster, a couple quick questions. First of all, would all these projects be under the project labor agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be local hire, and everybody doing the work would get paid a livable wage?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. The second quick question is that, you know, with the increased tax base revenue and the buying power of the bond market right now with our improved bond rating, I believe you had mentioned that there's going to be absolutely no impact to other projects that will be delayed, or?
No, we're actually able to implement this plan and move up several whole-site modernization projects.
So we're actually able to accelerate some other projects because of the bond rating and the revenue base?
That's correct.
It's assessed value, is that correct?
Assessed value.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Good. And I'm happy to pay my property taxes. Third question, you know, you guys have done an amazing job, the staff, Superintendent, and everybody, in getting air conditioning in the hottest 3,000 classrooms in the interior of our city. And now, this is the next phase, you know, putting air conditioning in the other classrooms in San Diego Unified. And I really appreciate you, you know, putting together such a comprehensive plan with such a quick turnaround. And the other question that's been coming and that we're all talking about and a lot of parents are concerned about and staff is, what about all the other spaces? And I think you had mentioned something about critical spaces at Scripps Ranch High School, such as the nurse's office and other places. Are those other critical spaces getting air conditioning installed soon?
Yes, we've been designing the critical space upgrades that were previously authorized, and those are going to happen in 2016.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just two more quick questions. First of all, okay, one more quick question. You had talked about the general fund and the fact that, obviously, when you put more air conditioning units in to keep our kids safe from extreme heat, that that will increase our electric bill. However, this plan includes $40 million in solar power panels, so that we are predicting a net zero increase in our electric budget?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you'd also mentioned that the expansion of solar power will prevent 4,900 tons of CO2 offsets, so that it'll be a carbon-neutral initiative?
That's correct.
Wow, thank you very much. I'd like to thank Lee Dolgoff and all the staff in the facilities department and Drew Rollins for all his help, because once we get them in, of course, we got to keep them running. Thank you very much, Superintendent Cindy Martin. And I'd encourage all my fellow Board members to once again vote to support this plan and to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Unless there's another comment, I think we have a first and a second? Okay, can we please vote? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And now that the agenda has been adopted, we're going to go back in order to B5, which is the United Way of San Diego's presentation of education canvas to the district and announcement of San Diego Unified's, oh, do we have speakers on?
Speakers, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Under air conditioning.
I apologize. We have speakers on air conditioning. we have Marcy Shear and Bernadette, I can read the B, but Bernadette B. You can come in any order. Please state your name, and you'll have the full three minutes.
Excuse me, President Foster, just as Bernadette's coming to the podium, I'd just like to acknowledge, we've got some special guests in the audience with us tonight. We've got a delegation from Shanghai representing the Municipal Trade Council who are here visiting with us tonight, so we'd like to welcome you to San Diego.
Can you please stand?
Nice.
Hi, my name is Bernadette Buckowitz. I represent UA Local 230, Plumbers and Pipefitters here in the city of San Diego, as well as the Imperial Counties. We have over 1,700 members, many of which have children that attend San Diego Unified. I myself am a product of San Diego Unified, and I have two nephews at Patrick Henry right now, so I'm very proud of that. Kind of speaking from that, though, really, I would just like to, you know, reiterate, thank you for voting yes on the HVAC. Having done my own research, I've seen the test scores, the results at an Oregon high school, for example, was at 61 degrees. It was 76 percent on a test, 81 degrees, a student scored 72, and at 72 degrees, a student scored 90 on a test. That is a significant difference, and I think you're doing a great job. I really appreciate your vote today.
Thank you.
Hi, yeah, again, want to thank you guys for moving along air conditioning. Actually, I spoke, I came here playing to speak tonight because I wasn't sure how this plan was going to jive with modernization and if you were going to have to wait. You know, my daughter's school was going to have to wait since it's slated for modernization, but it seems to have been answered. The one question I still was not quite sure on is, my daughter attends a school in Zone One, and it seemed, if I missed, unsure I missed this detail or not, it seemed like some of the modernization was going to maybe have to be ramped back a little to get the air conditioning, because she's in School One or Zone One. Okay, then we're good, and I'm out of here.
All right.
Bring on the AC.
Thank you.
If I could just add, we've had several conversations with people in Zone One, and the concern has been, when is this going to happen and what do we do between now and then? And I believe Lee has been very, very sensitive in taking care of that. What was impressed me about the presentation, as well as the thinking of both everybody involved, is the linking of temperature, as well as quality of air, to comfort in learning in the classrooms. So it's more than just dealing with a complicated issue of heat. It has to do directly with, how do we improve instruction? How do we have a safe and optimal learning environment? And I think both Lee and the department and Drew's department has done a great job in connecting those two, and we'll be moving forward, accelerating the package, as well as dealing with individual schools and individual classrooms at school sites. So we do have options for looking at individual hot zones and hot spaces, so just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Absolutely, thank you. And I think we may need to revote, is that correct? Do we need to revote? Okay, so as soon as it's reset. Can we see if we can get Richard?
Fast track Richard coming back from
From Shay. You're funny. Again? Yay! Okay, moving on to B5, Superintendent Martin, did you want to introduce?
Thank you. Thank you, President Foster.
We got to do public speakers first? Were you? B5?
I know. It's the resolution, right?
No, that's B6.
Oh.
B5 is the United Way of San Diego presentation of education canvas to the district and announcing San Diego Unified School District's Community Service Association Annual Workplace Giving Campaign. So I'd like to introduce our presenting with us tonight, well, Shayna Gross from the United Way. And I think we're going to go down to the podium, actually.
Shayna Gross is Senior Vice President and Chief Impact Officer from the United Way of San Diego, and thank you for joining us tonight. There's a strong partnership with United Way of San Diego and the Community Service Association, San Diego Unified's Community Service Association. And Shayna, I know you wanted to say a couple of words.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say a few words about our partnership. Sure. United Way is proud to lead the Partnership for Children, which is an effort with San Diego Unified, as well as many of our nonprofit partners and business partners, government, and we're focused on the critical milestones in children's lives around readiness for kindergarten, early-grade literacy, high school graduation, all those things outside of the classroom that kids need in order to be successful in the classroom, so the social-emotional health, the family stability issues. And in addition to the Partnership for Children, United Way has been partnering with the CSA campaign as well this year, which I think you'll hear a little bit about in just a moment. But in addition to that work, we are also helping union members around family stability and emergency services. So this is a canvas that our kids in City Heights and families painted, along with Superintendent Martin.
I did a pencil.
Yep. She did, I watched her mix the perfect color combination. And back in June, on what's called our Day of Action, where we distributed thousands of books to families so that they could combat the summer reading slide. A lot of our families don't have books in the homes over the summer, and you lose a lot of your literacy. So it's really critical to us that kids have the tools that they need to succeed, and the district has been a really great partner in that with us. So this canvas, and then here's a little book that shows some of the photos of the actual day and all the kids painting and things. So it's my pleasure to present this to the Board and to the district, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Shayna.
Thank you. As we
Oh, sorry.
One more. Thank you. As we kick off the campaign, the campaign actually kicked off on October 29th, and it runs through December 4th, and it's our annual workplace giving campaign. And Shayna just talked about the fine work that happens when we partner in a collective impact approach with United Way and CSA, helping to have our workplace giving campaign going now through December 4th. I want to show a quick snippet of the Partnership for Children, which focuses on quality preschool, kindergarten readiness, early-grade literacy, on-time high school graduation, and the social-emotional health of our students, including family stability. And so just so people understand
And so just so people understand the powerful work in partnership with United Way and the Partnership for Children, this is some of the impact with students as we work on our annual workplace giving campaign. And is somebody from CSA coming up to speak to after the video? Okay.
And we have students in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, about 1,200 of them. And at last count, we had close to 40 different languages spoken on our campus. Our students feed into Hoover High School. So much of our curriculum, much of our program, is really teaching students how to become good students, getting good study habits, how to think through problems, how to approach things so that when they not only are done here and move on to Hoover or wherever they may go to high school, then they can go on to San Diego State or wherever they may go to college and have those skill sets to be able to be successful.
It's an amazing thing to have a clinic on site. For our families and our students, it's just wonderful.
Another wonderful thing that we have for our students and families here is our community-based health clinic. It's located right on our campus. It's a wonderful program that not only our students and their families, but students within the community that attend our feeder schools have access. The beauty of our system now is it's right here. They can go right next door, see a doctor and literally within minutes, if they're going to return back to class, they're on their way back to class. That not only has helped with our health situation, it's definitely helped in our attendance situation. Now students are back in class. We have a place right here at Monroe Clark within the community where students can be seen. They're a little bit more confident about the care that students are receiving now.
High school, to me, is the most exciting part of this sort of K-12 experience for kids. You arrive here and really, you get to start making choices about your path. There's something for everybody at Hoover and this is your neighborhood school. It's less prescriptive here. You get to make some elective choices. You get to make some decisions about which classes you want to take and which options you want to exercise and what you want to do with your time after school. And do you want to go find a job after school? You want to get involved in athletics? Or do you want to try to balance both? To test your mettle and sort of set a course for what happens after high school. This is super exciting for us.
City Heights Partnership coming together, Hoover Cluster being out there. To me, it says that our children are important. It says that I understand that tomorrow, they're going to be making the decisions and we need to prepare them so that they'll make the right decisions that's going to be beneficial to everyone.
Now, it's about building relationships. We talk about that in the cluster. We're building relationships to do this tremendously challenging job of educating all children, regardless of their background, regardless of their abilities. We're going to do whatever it takes to make that happen. And we have to build relationships as adults to do that work, but we also have to make sure we do the same thing with our children.
Just to give you a little taste of the work that we do in partnership with the Partnership for Children and the Workplace Giving Campaign, I'm going to invite someone up from CSA to say a few words.
Thank you for this opportunity to talk about CSA and our campaign. I'd like to introduce a few of our volunteer board members who are San Diego Unified employees. Cheryl Ward, Jim Felix, Don Wood, myself, John Ortler. And we also have our Secretary of Treasure, Michelle Fedeg here. And Don Wood will tell you a little bit more about our campaign.
Yes, I will. I'll talk about our CSA campaign. My name is Don Wood. I'm a teacher at Pacific Beach Middle School and I'm speaking for the Board of Directors of Community Service Association, which is, of course, our volunteer organization which allows district employees to contribute to charitable organizations throughout the county through payroll deduction. We're currently in our annual membership drive, as Superintendent Martin has mentioned. We're grateful for the support of the board and especially for the support of Superintendent Martin as we reach out to employees all over the district, at all levels in the district. During our membership drive, we've been... We have, as I say, we've been reaching out to all employees. Superintendent Martin sent out a great email to all employees encouraging membership for all district employees who are capable, I guess, of contributing to their community, of giving monetary donations to charities in our community. We made presentations to all the employee bargaining units and we have representatives at all school sites and all work sites that are coordinating the campaign at those sites at that level. The CSA was founded in 1956 by district employees. It's all volunteer-run. Its success for 60 years is a testament to the generosity of employees in our district and their commitment to the community through charitable giving. We're very excited about the new partnership with United Way and the Partnership for Children, especially, again, given Superintendent Martin's commitment to that program and to CSA, even as we continue to support dozens of smaller agencies and organizations all over the community through the generous support, again, of district employees. So thank you, Board, Superintendent, for your continued support and as we reach out... As we continue to reach out through December 4th to all district employees to contribute as they can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, how do we sign up?
Funny, you should ask. Sandy.net/csa or something like that. The paperwork, all those site-level representatives have paperwork or it can be done online through payroll deductions can be set up through PeopleSoft for all employees. So it can be done through the computer or through paperwork that the representatives at district sites all have or they can get from the district website.
Did we send out an email or any kind of communication to all the district employees about the opportunity?
Yes, I did. He was mentioning that an email came directly from me to all of our employees talking about the opportunity. And this is an incredible partnership when you think about the long history of CSA in this district and now you're partnering with United Way to add more support to how we do our collective impact approach. That came from me with the link to the page and instructions how to sign up and we're merging the long-established history of workplace giving through CSA and the power of literally the United Way coming together with the work of this district for our students. That email went out earlier this week or last week?
About a week ago.
About a week ago. And the campaign is still open until December 4th?
And employees can contribute at any time, not just during the campaign.
This is the campaign season, yes. Thank you for bringing the canvas, United Way.
I'm going to have our General Counsel, Ms. Donovan, make a comment about B6.
Yeah, I took a look at B6 on the attachments. The agenda item is for National Parent Day and the exhibits appear to explain why, what we're doing in connection with that. So I think it's fine.
Thank you. Thank you. So moving right along, B6, Resolution Recognizing November 19, 2015 as National Family Involvement Day. Superintendent Martin, did you want to introduce?
Thank you, President Foster. Okay. This is to approve the resolution recognizing November 19 and National Family Involvement Day and for our Board, inviting you tonight to recognize the importance of this day and the goal of increasing overall student achievement through parent engagement. And you've heard me speak recently about some of our efforts to do, have a systemic approach to family engagement. And this resolution tonight aligns to what our current work is. If you'd like, and the resolution is available, I'm going to invite up Allison Rowland is going to help present and we have other speakers, I know, on the item as well.
This is a vote. So do I have a motion in a second?
So moved. No second.
Okay. And we do have speakers on this item. We have Chelsea... Celeste Bobwick Ozaki. And we have Wee Dee. We have Martha Rosales. We have Miriam Ali. We have Dan Naimanga. We have Kathleen Wilson, Rose Sebastian, Alan Tang, Principal Richard Lawrence, and of course, our... And of course, Allison Rowland. So... And then we also have Citizen Barbara Flannery and Suzie Sovereign. And so you can go ahead and speak.
I have supported PTA, but its disappointing decision to participate in the sham town halls is a poor decision. The district is shifting the taxpayers' resources from educating our children to swaying the public with inaccurate information. The timing of this resolution seems to be a pat on the back for helping this scam on the taxpayers to have people bear more tax burdens. This timing is political and nothing else and doesn't belong on the agenda today. It's confusing. The agenda item states a resolution, but it's truly not. Is this a National Family Day? Is it a PTA recognition? Is it Crawford Parents Day? What is this really about? I think it's just some more sneaky-sneak from this school district and its politicking behind the scenes. It's very disappointing to find out that the public was given such poor information at that town hall, that the superintendent was stating misinformation, that instead of focusing on the mismanagement in this district, the fraud in this district, the failure to address the sexual molestation of students in this district, instead you're running around doing a marketing campaign on, "We need more money. We need more money. We need more money." Well, money is not the answer to educating kids. It's quality teachers. We should be focusing on having teachers be reviewed every year to see if they're good teachers. So this PTA resolution doesn't belong here. The whole agenda item is confusing and a mess and I don't quite know exactly where you guys are going with this agenda item, but it certainly doesn't belong here. It smacks of politics.
Do we have any other speakers? A point of clarification, the first names that I called are actually presenters. So they're actually going to make a presentation about National Family Involvement Day. But before you give your presentation, I just want to make sure that we don't have any other speakers. Barbara Flannery, Suzie Sovereign are either... Oh. Is Suzie a presenter?
Yes.
Okay. There's a speaker form, so I'm sorry. Okay. All right. So your presentation... Sorry about any confusion. So your presentation. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
I'm Suzie. We have a whole list of people, the people you read off, and Celeste is first.
That are part of the presentation?
Right.
Okay. I see Barbara Flannery, you're a speaker. Can you please come forward? We're having the speakers speak. I'm sorry.
My name is Celeste Bobwick Ozaki. I'm the president for San Diego Unified Council of PTAs. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the school board. I represent 80 PTA units and over 1,400 volunteers serving as PTA leaders in schools of San Diego Unified School District. I stand here before you today to support this proclamation, not only on behalf of all the PTA volunteers, but also to the thousands of parents, caregivers, grandparents, community members, and other volunteers who make daily contributions to enhance the educational experiences for the students in our schools. The Council of PTA supports the San Diego Unified School District to encourage our schools to acknowledge their contributions made by these unsung heroes because after the mission of PTA is to realize every child's potential and reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. A little confusion, school board members. As our Council PTA President mentioned, we have PTAs in 80 schools. Four years ago, we at the PTA recognizing that we represent or attempt to represent all students in the district forth an idea for a program that involved and engaged all schools and all families. Recognizing that one of our most important indicators of student success is parent involvement, we embarked on a program, which is nationally-recognized program, Project Appleseed, which takes place on the third Thursday of November. It was our intention to partner with the district schools to recognize all things, big or small, that our parents and caretakers do every day to make our students successful. And we didn't care if you were a PTA or a foundation or even if you didn't have an organized parent group. This was about the schools and the parents. We would like to recognize our parents, our stepparents, grandparents, foster parents, our aunts and uncles and even brothers and sisters and family friends that make an impact every day and you may find them raising a student. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin and Board. My name is Alan Tang. I'm the new principal at Horace Mann Middle School in the Crawford Cluster. And I was asked, in honor of National Family Involvement Day, to share some of the work that we've done with design thinking in the Crawford Cluster. And so you may ask, what is design thinking? I know I asked that question myself. And, you know, I think of the definition of insanity, which is continuing to do the same thing over and over and expecting different results. And so, you know, instead of being kind of a top-down approach, what we did with design thinking was really an event that we tried to replace, you know, the no-but with a yes-and. And so it was a collaborative process where we were able to engage in an authentic dialogue to kind of come up with a vision of what we could do when we worked together. And so it was really, you know, not... It was a way for us to build trust, a way for us to kind of erase the titles, our job titles, the titles of whether we're high school, middle school, elementary school, whether we're parent, teacher, student, community member, administrator, whether we're from Crawford, Mann, Fay, or Ibarra. You know, it was a way for us to get together and work collaboratively. And so, you know, the final part of it was really about finding the voice. And so, you know, when I share, we'll have some other speakers come and share some of the work that was done on that day. But, you know, I think of two events and examples of the work that happened, you know, on that Saturday. You know, one, you know, earlier today, we had our second refugee immigrant training in our community room. And that community room that we developed at Horace Mann didn't exist, you know, prior to the cluster meeting. It's something that was an idea[1684.06] It's something that was an idea that sprang from the design thinking work that was done at the event. The second thing I think of is one of our students, Tina Tran, who earlier today asked when we were going to have our next Crawford Cluster meeting because she was going to co-attend. And I think having students find their voice, having parents find their voice, was a lot of that design thinking event. And we have other speakers here that can share more of that. But if I could just pause real quickly, if anybody that was at the design thinking event from the Crawford Cluster, if I could get you to stand up real quickly, I know we have some of us in attendance today. So as you know, Crawford Cluster is a very diverse cluster, have a large representation of different groups from throughout San Diego County. And so it's my pleasure to introduce one of the Mann parents, Miriam Ali. She's going to be our next speaker.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Miriam Ali, and I'm a parent of Mann Middle School, Crawford, and Ibarra. I really enjoy the design thinking because I learned a lot of different things that I didn't know, and a lot of different ideas being shared with a lot of different people from different schools, a lot of different principals, different parents. Our voice being heard, and we listened to different kinds of ideas, that how we support our kids, communication was missing, we have to have more communication. And it was a wonderful workshop that day. We enjoyed, and we hope to have more design thinking from the board member, the Board of Education, that they can give us more opportunity to learn, to have those kinds of discussions with different parents, with different kinds of people, because it was a great opportunity that parents who never speak, talking to other people, and making us a different group and sharing different ideas, like what we've been doing, how we help our kids to make them succeed. So it was so wonderful. Thank you. We appreciate you. We want more design thinking so we can build more relationships and have self-confidence to talk to the teacher, the principal. We are a second language, English is a second language to us, so we scare our parents. We cannot talk to the teacher. We cannot say, okay, how can I help this? Where to go? What do I do? Having and talking different kinds of principals, teachers, it was a wonderful opportunity for us to have that beautiful opportunity. Thank you.
My name's Kathleen Wilson. I'm currently an English learner support teacher for Area 6. Before that, for the last 10 years, I was the ELST at Ibarra Elementary, and I also participated in the design thinking event. I believe that the design thinking process was a valuable experience. I think that the collaboration between the families and the school staff invites us to imagine the possibilities that we do not have to limit our thinking. I gained great insight into the parents' and students' point of view, listening to their stories, and that gave me respect for them. It also connected me to them on a personal level and to build relationships. When we can connect with others and have a common experience like we did that day, we can create possibilities together. I think collaborating with a group of people to design projects and offer creative solutions will have positive results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Martha Rosales. I have a kid in 3rd grade in Fay Elementary. I decided to get involved in design thinking because for me, like a mother, it was a big experience to get involved in education because I want to make sure the education my kids receive in the school is the one he's supposed to get. So it's a good start, and it's a good opportunity to share with a principal and teachers because sometimes like a parent, we say, oh, that's the principal of the school. And we never say hi, hello, good morning. So now, when design thinking, we know everybody, we are people, we can talk to each other, and that was a good idea. A lot of misunderstands to parents, to teachers, and principals. And that day, that was a good day for everybody. And I hope we see in the future our school, more quality education for our kids, because I believe our school need more support. And I just want to remind you guys, in the future, please, give you a little extra money for translation because we really need, and for parent involvement, please. We really need a lot of support for parent involvement. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Rose Sebastian. I am an education specialist at Ibarra. So at the training, we had the opportunity to hear from parents, their frustrations about things like not being able to communicate, why they want to pick their student up early from school, not being able to understand notes that are sent home, or sometimes even just feeling excluded from the school process. We also got to hear from teachers about their frustrations in bridging the gap. But what made the training powerful was that we didn't stop at the frustrations. There was brainstorming about solutions. And some of the solutions were very realistic. Some of them were very pie in the sky. They ranged from using Google Translate, to using student volunteer translators, to creating dropdown menus of like voice messages that can be sent home, to hiring translators. What was nice about this was that once we started the brainstorming, all of the staff that I've spoken with, once we left, we all started thinking of ideas on our own. Okay, well, I'm going to try this. I'm going to try that. I'm going to reach out like this. I'm going to reach out like that. So it created the idea in our heads that we can do more to bridge any communication gaps and that we have more resources to work with. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Nyamanga. I'm with the City of San Diego at Crawford Community Connection. And I'm so happy to be here with this wonderful team, just to share with you the power of collaboration and the power of having partnership within the community that we have the same goal of making sure that our children do succeed in their academics academically. And there's this saying in Swahili that goes like, basically what it means, one finger cannot crush a lie. You cannot crush a lie with one finger. You need the other, the second finger to crush a lie. And that's the power what we're using at Crawford Cluster. We discovered that, for me, as a parent, as a community member, I cannot, my child cannot make it if it's only me. I need the teacher, I need the principals, and I need the other community member in order to make these kids succeed. And that's why, before the design thinking, some two years ago, I was so glad to be able to be a community organizer, to work with these wonderful parents and communities, to bring them together and to understand just the basic, what are their roles as parents in education? And what role can they play in being their children's education guides at home? And what role can they do to support their teachers in helping their children at school? And we all know the diversity of Crawford Cluster, and we have more than 40 languages at Crawford High School alone. And for a teacher to even think of that, how do I communicate with this parent or how their child is doing in school? It's a nightmare. And so we came up with this wonderful idea of having our parents and community members who speak certain languages to meet once a month and just go through the months or the weeks going on, like what is CLT testing? What is report card? What does it mean? What does it mean to our F? What does it mean to our A in a classroom? And what are the steps that you can take as a parent to reach that teacher in order to make your child do better in school? And so what came out of that is like a true partnership business. Our Crawford principal, the former principal now, who left, opened the door for Crawford High School for us to meet monthly there. And what we saw is really amazing, the power of collaboration. And I'm really so happy that now at Crawford Cluster, we are not wallowing in the may isma of doing the same thing and expecting a different result. No, we are coming together and realizing that the power of collaboration is really important. And we also have a Crawford Community Collaborative, which is a monthly meeting where we all discover the different resources that are available within the Crawford area that support the whole child, their family, and the child themselves. And largely with the leadership of our new principal and our fabulous superintendent, Fabi, we are thinking of having a small, just a small committee for education to support our principals and our teachers, and to what is it that is out there that the school, the district with the limited resources cannot provide, that the different community organizations can provide, that the teachers can tap into and support our children. And we know we have different community organizations that do after-school tutoring. And can a teacher refer a student there to help if the school cannot provide that after-school tutoring for our English learner students or any other students that are there? So that's why I'm so happy, I'm always smiling when I see you. I know you have very difficult decisions to make every day, but at Crawford Cluster, we discovered something that together we are stronger, I think. And then came the design thinking. Thank you. What came out of that, I love it because we brought like seven languages, parents who speak seven languages, and now our principals and our teachers, to sit in the audience and listen to them talk in their native languages. And you can see the frustration in our principals' and teachers' eyes because they could not understand what the parents are saying. And later on, we share what they were saying, and it was such a wonderful idea. And I'm really grateful that we are moving forward with this as a cluster to support our children, do better in school. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Susie Sovereign, the Principality Barra Elementary. And Dan just said it beautifully, but what I wanted to give you a little history of was where the Crawford Cluster has come, where we were before and where we've come, and how much more parent involvement this is providing for us, and how we have been working and working to increase the parent involvement in our cluster and this opportunity. And it wasn't just one day, but we will be moving forward. And we've already had a cluster planning meeting for our next meeting, and we were working on things that we can do to bring the community together, and things that we can do after listening to our parents and really hearing what they had to say. And all of this is about appreciating our parents and increasing the parent involvement. And so we want to really thank them for speaking tonight and for being here and representing our group. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin, President Foster, trustees, and most importantly, student representatives. As recently as yesterday, the Crawford Cluster principals... Oh, I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Dr. Lawrence, proud principal of Crawford High School. As recently as yesterday, the Crawford Cluster principals and community leaders were engaged in follow-up meetings that were focused on addressing the voices, concerns, and experiences still resonating with the cluster principals and community leaders who attended the design thinking session and the subsequent meeting that occurred last month. I am proud of the fact that our cluster of principals, leaders, and community members, and most importantly, students, brought forth concerns and ideas in which our cluster turned into action items. For each cluster meeting following that Saturday session, we have been able to bring back solutions to unanswered questions or concerns brought forward by meeting participants. As principal of Crawford High School, I continue to reflect on the voices that were present at that initial design thinking meeting. And I become ever more aware of the voices of family groups who were noticeably silent and absent from these meetings and discussions. It is that concern that has prompted me and my team to begin working on creating motivating means of engagement for our Latino, African-American, and students of African descent, as well as our Caucasian families, and gather groups in order to garner their voice and perspective on ways to overcome the barriers that exist between school and home that have led to unsuccessful experiences for students and families in the past in order to redirect our future. This we aspire to achieve through the expansion of workshops, parent support networks, and digital communication. Crawford High School, along with the Crawford Cluster, cease to allow and show and prove that the seemingly impossible task of collaborating with families in a manner that will produce success for students within the inner city is both attainable and essential. Thank you for providing us this opportunity to lead this charge.
So you heard some voices tonight. This is the resolution before you tonight to the board trustees, is National Family Involvement Day. And historically, in 2012, this board, San Diego Unified Council of PTAs, introduced the first National Parent Involvement Day back in 2012. And you'll see tonight's resolution is National Family Involvement Day. And we have decided, as a district, we're committed to looking at the multiple ways that we can have a systemic approach to family engagement. And so we are looking at tonight's resolution about recognizing November 19th as a National Family Engagement Day. We wanted some families to come out and talk to us about an experience they had specifically in the Crawford Cluster, but the district is looking at a systemic approach of what does a Family Engagement Day look like? And who decides a relevant, meaningful, authentic Family Engagement Day? Some of the ways that we have been doing them have been working really well, and we learned in the Design Thinking Day out in the community that there are more things that we can do to be more systemic in our approach. So as we brought this resolution forward today, we wanted to talk about the systemic approach we're taking to family involvement and taking this very important work in partnership with PTA, of course, the strong mission of PTA, and expanding what does family engagement and involvement really look like in our district? And that's what tonight's resolution is about. Thank you. Board members, you want to make a comment? Trustee Barrera?
Yeah, thank you, President Foster. So I want to thank Superintendent Martin and everybody from the Crawford Cluster for being here with us tonight. And as Superintendent Martin was commenting, the work that you've done with the design think process is actually a model for what we're trying to develop throughout our district. And going through the goals for this year, for the 2015-16 year, we asked Superintendent Martin to take on an incredibly large, complicated task that I don't think certainly has been done in this district, and I'm not sure has been done anywhere in the country, which is to say, if you look at our mission statement, the first word in a mission statement is "all," and we're referring in the mission statement to all students. However, what we're asking Superintendent Martin and everybody in our district to take on the challenge is that we have a strategy that actually equips all parents with the skills and confidence that parents need to actually support their students' learning every day. And I know this is a, we're referring here to National Family Involvement Day, but we're talking about every day. And all parents having the ability to support their students in their process of learning, that's a massive task, and it's something that goes well beyond, I think, anything that we've seen in terms of what we typically think of as parent engagement. We're talking about more than parents participating in the governments of the schools, parents participating in activities at the schools. All of that is important. We'll continue to want to support that kind of work. But we also understand that, at best, 2%, 3% of parents in this district are engaged in those types of activities. So what we're talking about is what happens with the 95%, 97% of parents in our district who we all know are the key to making a difference in terms of whether students meet their goals, meet their academic goals. So what we've asked Superintendent Martin to do is to take this year and basically develop a strategy. What's our strategy going to look like going forward so that we can equip all parents in this district with the skills and confidence that they need to be able to support their students' learning? And so the process that you've undertaken in the Crawford Cluster is part of our first attempt to develop a district-wide strategy. And it's so exciting to hear the way you're going about this because it's parents, and teachers, and principals, and people within our district, but then it's our community partners from, say, San Diego. It's understanding that everybody has to come together to help design this strategy. And I'm especially grateful to hear that the process that you use is a process that engaged parents who normally are not engaged, who we normally don't see. That's exactly what this development of this strategy is about. So I certainly move approval of the superintendent's recommendation, but I really want to thank the Crawford Cluster for your leadership in this work because it's work that, the work of designing a strategy to support all parents is huge, and you've taken the first step, and you're leading our district towards the development of that strategy. So thank you for this work.
And I just would add that what I also witnessed is that all of our bargaining units were there and participated in this conversation as well. So we're talking about internal and external stakeholders working together to come up with a plan. And what I also was... And what I also was struck by was the comment on how even organically in the conversation, you developed ideas and strategies on how to meet a need that perhaps the district isn't currently meeting, that you've developed that with parents and community members among yourselves. And so that's by design, right? So that's very powerful, and I look forward to the outcomes and the solutions that come from working collaboratively. So thanks again for your leadership and all of the participants. And I know Superintendent Martin, I think you wanted to say something as well.
I was just going to say, this is a resolution that this board has approved every year since 2012, and we could have gone on autopilot, the same resolution, the same language every year that we've always done, and we're interested in --
The definition of insanity.
The definition of insanity, that like Ellen Tang said, the principal from Horace Mann. And so we took this opportunity, seeing that something was beginning in that beginning stage of what was happening at Crawford, something was happening there that was different than what we've done and adding to what we've done and building from that, that we wanted to take this resolution that has continued for several years and add to it and signal that it's more than just a day. It's not Family Involvement Day, it's first of all, not National Parent Involvement Day, we've changed to National Family Involvement Day, and then it's more than a day, and something happened in Crawford that we think signals how are all of the ways that we will be doing this. So the reason why we took the opportunity to do it, to talk about it tonight is it's a typical, it's an annual resolution that the board has always done, and we're adding the thinking to it and how we're planning to expand. And there'll be a full presentation from further participants as we expand this strategy to be more systemic over the course of this year.
And I have to mention that, you know, I'm exceedingly proud and excited that this conversation started in Crawford Cluster. I'm just saying.
Thank you, Crawford.
Thank you, you represented so --
We also just --
And, oh, I just was also going to just acknowledge Allison's leadership in all of this.
Yeah, I thought you were going to say something, Allison, but you let everybody else speak, unless you wanted to come up.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And so we are --
Adopt the agenda.
Oh, we already adopted the agenda, thank goodness. And so we, so there's been a motion and a second, and so could we please vote? And that passes unanimously. And next, we're going to hear from our Associated Student Body ASB president's report. And at this time, you know, we'd like to hear what you're doing both academically and socially.
All right, hello, good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jesus Martinez, and I am the ASB president at Claremont High School. And I'm also the executive council president for all the high schools in San Diego Unified School District. So Claremont's been having a great, great time. We're at the end of our fall sports season, and our girls volleyball, football, boys' water polo, and girls tennis all made it to playoffs, with girls volleyball being the league champions for, I think this is going to be the fifth year in a row. They had round one of CIF playoffs versus Coronado last night, and they won in three. And they have round two of their playoffs versus Olympian tonight, which actually just started three minutes ago. So if any of the Claremont parents are watching this, good luck, chieftains. Good luck to all our chieftains. Actually, we still have a really good chance of getting further in our playoffs and getting the most out of our season. Claremont High School is participating in Bring Your Parents to School Day on Monday, November 16th, and this recognizes parent involvement, like we've been speaking about for the past half an hour now. And, you know, just great shout out to all of our PTSA involvement and all the parents that really make all these events possible. Next week, we are having a Pride Week put on by the ASB to celebrate in a week of giving thanks, right before we go on our Thanksgiving break. Monday is going to be our nationality Pride Day, Tuesday is LGBTQIA Pride Day, Wednesday is Team Pride Day, Thursday is Academy slash Class Pride Day, and then finally, Friday is going to be Claremont High School Pride Day, and it'll conclude with a lunchtime pep rally to honor all the seniors in fall sports this year and wish them great luck and the rest of their senior year. Another thing about our wonderful PTSA, they are in the process of putting together a Winter Wonderland event, which is meant to be a cultural representation of our school and community, as we are a part of, you know, the Claremont Cluster, and we are partnering with different middle schools and elementary schools. We want to show everyone diversity that we have in the Claremont community and have fun while we do it. Another thing, the executive council, we will be having our student congress next Wednesday, November 18th, here in this auditorium. So I invite all the board members and trustees to please come on by. We'll be speaking about some very hot, fun topics in our district. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. This is my first time here, so a little bit about myself is, my name's Kenny Tran. I'm a senior at Miramesa High School. I've been in ASB for four years. Things outside of, things I'm involved in outside of school are, I'm part of the District Attorney's Office Youth Advisory Board, as well as the ASB president, executive council, I'm the historian. And I'm also part of the Youth Activation Committee, which assists in the event of Special Olympics, which is held in California, Southern Region, and we just hold like an event where all the special education kids can play sports and all. I'm also in the Project Unify Club, which, and I'm the treasurer, and then I'm also the athletic club vice president. And what's happened in the last two months at our school, we've had a welcome back, Spear Week and Dance, and for homecoming, we've had two weeks to plan that, but it was pretty amazing. We sold over 900 homecoming tickets. We had a laser show after a football game, and we sold over 1,000 ASB cards, which is like pretty much half of the school, which is amazing because we've never passed that limit before. Also, about two weeks after that, we had an awareness week, which is similar to a Pride Week. Instead of doing like one week devoted to one issue, I decided to kind of combine all the issues. So we had an awareness week, which encompassed suicide prevention, promotion of drug, promotion of being drug-free, breast cancer awareness, anti-bullying, and on Friday, we had Halloween that day, so we also had kind of like a dress-up day for costumes. And then last Saturday, we, Miramesa High School hosted the 23rd Annual Field Tournament for bands, and we actually got first place for our drum major because she didn't drop her mace, which has happened in the past years, so she got first place for that. And today, we actually had an event, we had an anti-bullying presentation provided by Athlete Ally, and Dr. Mike and Cindy Martin was actually, was actually there, so thank you for coming. To give a brief description about Athlete Ally, it's an organization that, to end homophobia and transphobia, and kind of spreads awareness about LGBTQIA in sports and how to end bullying there. And that kind of ties in with this week because we also have an anti-bullying week, and we kind of, we kind of just kind of combined those two issues together. And then also, San Diego County Credit Union is holding a contest where the winning school gets a performance from Tori Kelly and $1,000. And last year, our school won Echo Smith during the month of June, and this year, we're hoping to win. I just got news that we're actually tied with Scripps Ranch, which is our rival school, so we're trying to beat them. Yeah, and we're also playing them for playoffs this Friday, and we're hoping to win that, and if we win, we'll play against RB, which is known for having a really good student section, so we're excited for that. And then for things in the future, we're planning to have a winter formal and a Thanksgiving Spear Week next week. And that's about it. Our school's doing pretty well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're complete. So we're going to go back up to D, Report of Closed Session Actions and Superintendent and Board Information Reports, but we do have a speaker, which is Citizen, so if you could come up and please speak.
So this is the superintendent's report?
This is D, the Report of Closed Session Actions.
I wanted to speak to the superintendent's report.
It's Report of Closed Session Actions and Superintendent and Board Information.
Oh, no, that was a note I wrote to her that I can't hear when they are announcing it because I have a hearing loss. And if they could write things so that people that are deaf can hear what she's speaking because she's behind you guys and she doesn't speak very well, so it's hard to understand general counsel when she's making announcements about closed session. That's what I was saying. I just wrote it on a piece of paper.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so are there any reportable items that you'd like to report out, General Counsel Donovan?
Yes, thank you. The board voted 4-0 in closed session to authorize a single initiation of litigation with the parties to be announced after the lawsuit is served.
Okay, and Superintendent Martin, you have administrative assignments?
Thank you, President Foster. I have two administrative assignments. Administrator of Business Operations and Payroll and Benefits, Tim Fournier, and Director of Human Resources, Aaron Houston.
Okay, and then I know we have a long board meeting tonight, but I don't know if there's any board reports.
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I had some meeting with some gay and lesbian students in our school district, and I'm very concerned because I was under the impression that the staff and the superintendent were going to give this board an LGBT update in October, but that date was moved back to November 10th, and then now that's been moved back again. And so there are a lot of concerns with students in our school district that are gay, lesbian, and transgender, that the school district staff are dragging their feet on actually implementing items that this board voted 5-0 for last year. We still do not have any way to report bullying incidents in our schools. There was supposed to be, and there's been talk about easier bullying reporting form, a bullying reporting hotline, a bullying reporting button on the website, none of that exists to date yet. There's very, a lot of concern that there's still, we're still in the planning stage here, we're in the next school year after the board voted 5-0 for mandatory staff training on LGBT issues, and as far as I am aware, there has been zero members of this staff trained on LGBT issues per the charge and the plans of the superintendent and the staff. I think it is phenomenal that the students are taking the lead in the absence of the staff and the superintendent acting on the board's 5-0 actions last school year. I'm thrilled that Claremont High School is actually having a Gay Pride Day at Claremont High School. That is something to be commended, those students are to be commended for taking this action, recognizing that there is a mountain of research and data and evidence that proves that 90% of gay, lesbian, and transgender children are bullied in schools, that across the country, over 300,000 kids do not go to school every day because they're victims of LGBT bullying. They fear for their own safety. I also think it is phenomenal and to be commended that Miramesa High School took the Athlete Ally pledge. That is amazing. The Athlete Ally pledge is a pledge to stand up for gay and lesbian people that want to participate in sports, whether it's in high school, middle school, college, or professional athletics. And I wish that I could have been there at Miramesa High School. Dr. Mike and I were able to be there when the Padres here in San Diego were the first ever professional sports team to take that pledge on the field with the owner and the manager of the Padres. And so I really am very encouraged by the things going on at Miramesa High School for the Athlete Ally pledge, and at Claremont High School for the first Gay Pride Day. Because in San Diego Unified, we are charged as trustees on this Board of Education to make sure that we're providing a safe, quality learning opportunity for all of our kids, including kids in our schools that are gay, lesbian, or transgender. And I, so with that, I again look forward to a time in the future that is uncertain when we might receive an LGBT update from the staff and the superintendent on progress towards these initiatives that some have yet to be implemented. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to report on a couple of events. I attended this weekend the Title VII Powwow of Alaskan and Native American tribes that included the First Peoples also from Guam. It was a terrific celebration, a celebration of their history, culture, language, their songs, and their dances. And I understand this will be a first of a series of annual events taking place where we acknowledge the contributions and the appreciation of our indigenous peoples. So I look forward to that event taking place again next year. I also visited Kate Sessions Elementary School and celebrated the birthday of Kate Sessions, and we also unveiled the peace ball in the Kate Sessions School Garden. This is the second peace ball that was dedicated in the Mission Bay Cluster, and it's the third peace ball that's dedicated in San Diego schools. The first one was dedicated at Central when Superintendent Martin was principal, and we followed her lead. Peace balls are a symbol, recognized internationally as a location where we acknowledge the acts of kindness, the receiving of kindness and compassion. So there are about 200,000 peace balls throughout the world, and we now have three of them in San Diego Unified School District. Thank you.
Sure, I just wanted to comment on two things. One is, this Saturday at the Logan Library, from nine o'clock to, I think, what did we go to, one o'clock?
Ten, ten o'clock.
I'm sorry, ten?
Ten o'clock. Ten to 12.
Ten to 12, okay, yeah, much shorter, thank you. Ten to 12, we've got an important meeting in the community to discuss the future of the Memorial Middle School campus. So we've had several discussions in the community here in the district with stakeholders in Memorial about both developing a physical site in Memorial, so in other words, constructing, you know, new buildings, the potential of constructing a combination of a new Memorial Middle School with a high school in Logan Heights. But as important, or more important than just simply the physical construction that we're, that we've got in mind is, what's the academic program that's going to go in, that's going to be important to students and to families in the Logan Heights, Bario-Logan, Sherman Heights community? So this Saturday at Memorial Middle School, we're working with council member David Alvarez to bring out the entire community to participate in a visioning session about what the future of Memorial could look like, what the future of a new high school in Logan Heights could look like, and how that connects with San Diego High School. So I'd encourage as many people who can participate in that to please come out. Secondly, I'd like to thank the leadership of President Foster, Vice President Evans, and Superintendent Martin for holding our first town hall last week in the, on the, on the question of investment in our schools. I thought that the superintendent did a fantastic job of laying out what's possible if we fully invest in our students. And we looked at several strategies that are currently working to frankly eliminate the achievement gap, strategies around supporting English learners, strategies around expanding career pathways, programs in high schools, strategies around our visual and performing arts. What the superintendent was able to lay out first to our community in San Diego, but really as part of the leadership that San Diego Unified is taking on throughout the state of California, is if we simply, as a generation of Californians, invest in the strategies that we know work, and thereby, if we're able to take those strategies to scale to support all of our students, we not only eliminate the achievement gap scale to support all of our students, we not only eliminate the achievement gap, but we prepare our students to lead us into a future California that we as adults, you know, we don't know what the future is going to look like, and we have a sense of the enormous challenges we're leaving behind to our kids. But the one thing that we can do is we can equip them with the ability to take these challenges on, to be successful learners. And what that will take is simply a commitment of this generation of Californians to invest in strategies that we know work. This is not a question of us not knowing what the answers are to eliminating the achievement gap and to preparing our students for the next generation. We know what the answers are. What we haven't done, as a current generation of Californians, is fully invest in those strategies. And what's striking is that if we simply invest to the level of the national average in states across the country, the national per pupil average of funding, we could take these strategies to scale, we could eliminate the achievement gap, and we can prepare our students to lead us into the future generation. So it's in our hands as a current generation of Californians. We benefited from the investment that prior generations of Californians made in creating a great public education system. And now it's our turn, and it's time for us to step up. And what the superintendent has done is not only inspired us around what's possible, but challenged us here in San Diego and throughout California to do what's right by this group of students. And so this has begun a process. It's a process that is long-term in nature. But one of the things that I think was most important about this Town Hall is we had several people who committed to moving forward and taking this conversation out to their schools, to their neighborhoods, to their families, so we can create a drumbeat, you know, in this state of what's possible if we fully invest in our kids. So I want to thank President Foster and Superintendent Martin and Vice President Evans for leading us to that discussion last week.
And I just want to echo what Trustee Brera said, that this is really just the beginning. We're just beginning to lay it out, but this is going to be a years-long campaign to really bring focus across California to the need for funding in public education. And with the results that we came up with, as Trustee Brera pointed out, with an average amount of money, we can do an outstanding, excellent job. We are really prepared to give taxpayers a good bang for their buck. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to E2, which is the District Accountability Report on LCAP Goal Number Four, Positive School Environments, Climate and Culture with Equity at the Core and Support for the Whole Child. So Superintendent Martin?
Thank you, President Foster. I'd like to invite up Vernon Moore and Linda Truesdale to help with this presentation. And while they're coming up, I'd like to put it in context that the next two items, E2 and E3, are connected. E3, after this one's finished, we'll be doing our quarterly report that the Board requested around an update on English learners, students with disabilities, African-American students, and counseling services. You'll hear that as a second item, and that was a request from the Board on a quarterly update. But as we begin tonight, this item, E2, is something that we've committed to under the Local Control Funding Formula, LCFF, with our Local Control Accountability Plans. This district has committed to our goals by students. Are you leaving too? Okay, excuse. Thank you for the ASB students had to go home. For those of you that were watching, I think you must have homework to do? Okay. Thank you. Got to see you twice today, at Athlete Ally and here tonight on the dais. Thanks for being here. This update that we're presenting tonight is connected to LCAP Goal Number Four, which is our Positive School Environment, Climate, and Culture with Equity at the Core and Supports for the Whole Child. As you know, our LCAP this year has six goals. The six goals are aligned to our 12 Quality School indicators and the state's eight priorities. When we write the LCAP, we commit to resources, we commit to actions and services, and then we have data and metrics tied to those actions and services. And we've committed to each month providing the Board and the public with an update. As I update here on the dais with staff, this presentation happens monthly, and then it goes out to all of our stakeholder groups, at cluster meetings, at our AAE meeting, our Latino Advisory Committee meeting, to all of our stakeholder groups that we can get feedback on a monthly basis of how are we doing on our Local Control Accountability Plan. The actions and services in tonight's presentation, so we can hear how we're doing in specifically Goal 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3, providing social and emotional needs for our students, providing students' health and wellness, and additional support for our students and youth in transition. You're going to see some areas showcased tonight, so you can actually see what's in our LCAP in action, and you'll see the data and metrics that are used to see how we're making these intentional shifts across the district to support the whole child in collaboration with multiple departments. The data is our attendance rates, chronic absentee rates, suspension rates, expulsion rates, and English learner data. As you know, if you're having positive school environment, climate, and culture, then attendance rates begin to change because school is meaningful and relevant. So the expulsion rates, suspension rates, and attendance rates are tied to school climate, positive school climate and culture. So we want you to hear tonight on how we're doing in these particular areas and holding ourselves accountable for the commitments and promises that we've made. As you know, the focus of our work is based on the four learning cycles. The third learning cycle, we ask ourselves, how do we create the learning conditions that maximize the potential that lies within each learner and the variability of each learner? We also call it unlocking the genius, and that's specifically connected to LCAP Goal Number Four that we're presenting on tonight. At the core of everything we do, that slide just changed automatically for me. I don't know how they did it, but thank you. Oh, good job. Thanks, Linda. It was like magic. At the core of everything we do, we say equity is at the core to support the whole child. And this is a graphic that we use to help people understand visually that equality does not mean equity. And we will not deliver on the actions and services and the hope and the promise of our students if we don't do this in a way that's equitable. So what we'll do tonight is focus on our promising practices, and with that, I can't remember who I'm turning it over to first. Linda, okay.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us tonight. We're so excited to share this work that we've collaborated on for quite some time. We've been before you as a Board and as a Superintendent to share this and to join with you as we've begun this process over the last few years. So I'm supposed to be clicking the slides now. So we're starting with our appreciative lens. We're really looking at, in this presentation, what is working that's out there. And as Superintendent Martin said, we do have the data that backs that up, and we're going to look at that a little more specifically in our quarterly reports. But we thought we would start with shining the spotlight on where we are currently, thinking about these as our investment strategies. These are the things we know that are out there, that are our tipping points for what will work for our students, for each and every student at the variety of our schools that we have, based on the needs that they have. You will have the opportunity to hear other things within that Goal Four at other Board workshops, cultural proficiency, school safety plans. Those are coming in a future opportunity. We felt that this was a good way to bundle this today around health and wellness, positive behavior supports, restorative practices, and our youth in transition to narrow our focus. We're going to start a little bit with positive behavior supports and interventions. And this really maximizes learning cycle one. We spent a lot of time last year thinking about how do we make the classroom environment, the school environment worthy? Now we're broadening into the social and emotional pieces. And so within the counseling and guidance realm, within our behavior supports, how are we really making sure that we are touching each and every student and that our classrooms are, and our communities of learners have that opportunity to broaden and grow? We began quite a long time ago. We've talked about our journey before, so we're just putting that in there as a refresher. This is the piece that I want to linger on just a moment, about the connectedness of the work. I think that we often talk about, previously, we would talk about our programs specifically in that siloed approach. And this slide is getting us to that notion and understanding that this really is all connected in service of instruction. And instruction is what's at the core for each and every one of our programs, our offices. And we really are committed to ensuring that we can put all of these pieces together and help a school site understand where their exact point of need is, whether it might be heightened in their behavior support resources, it might be through the positive behavior supports, where we're looking at school climate and culture, it's adding in our restorative practices. So this is our layering approach grounded in our learning cycles. We know another piece that we don't have up there that we need to recognize and include is our trauma-informed care practices, because they do all link and connect at different places and spaces and time for our students and our families. There's a lot of great strategies out there. We have over 90 schools that are implementing them. And so we're so proud of each and every school that has had that opportunity to go through this process with us and continues to build, to advocate for themselves, for their students, for their communities, on how do we get more? They're always, how can we have more? And so we thank you for that opportunity, for providing more to them. So I just highlighted a few of our school sites, the work that they're doing when they come to us as a team, that comes an entire team. So we wanted to honor and showcase the fact that they really are putting this into action and implementing. And then we looked a little bit at data. So this is a variety of our schools. It's definitely not an exclusive or extensive or exhaustive list, but we wanted to look at some of our schools that have applied their practices over time, and to look at the fact that we do see a shift. You do see some of them are going to stay a little bit even. You might see a spike or not necessarily a change. But again, these suspensions are really, it could be one student that's having a rough time. So we're thinking about this, and we're making sure that what we're seeing ultimately as a district is a downward trend in suspensions. And secondary is, as we'll look at in a little while in the quarterly updates, that is the area that we have to focus on more, because the middle school in most of our data shows us, you know, areas that we need to explore, examine, and go deeper on. Oops, I went way too fast. Sorry. I don't have to go back, but it's okay. I know, it's like one of those quicker things, right? I think that ultimately what we wanted to get to at the end was just understanding, you know, that we continue to need to grow this work, and we need to continue to have partners. It does impact our thinking about how a school operates. This is a foundational element for us as we move forward. And with that, we also recognize, and this is where I'm going to turn to Michelle Bell, our Program Manager for Nursing and Wellness, that wellness is connected to the work that we're doing. It's not, you know, none of these things are mutually exclusive.
And the one slide that you just went too fast by actually showed what the next steps were for our PBIS expansion, that we're seeing results, we're seeing early returns on it. And these are the next steps that Linda's contemplating. And you can see that these are systemic. This isn't one silo, one department, one individual trying to do this to the schools or for the schools. But you see, we're coordinating and aligning the efforts with counseling and guidance and behavior support resources so that we can develop a system for sites to share these resources where we see great investment and PBIS very well embedded. How are we going to share that across the district? And then we would monitor the suspension rates and adjust the PBIS strategies that are already out there, the ones that are working, wanting to replicate them because it's showing promise. So that was the slide you had to go quickly on. Next steps are always important. And with that, the next very critical strategy in Goal Four is our student health and wellness. Michelle Bell?
Okay, so when I was in front of you last time, we talked about the wellness policy, the framework. And as you know, it was approved on April 14th, which is awesome. Just to reiterate, the reason why the policy is required is because we participate in the Federal Schools and Meals Program. And what are the responsibilities piece of the district? And that is that we have a district-level coordinator, which is myself. We have a district-level council where all the departments are represented, as well as administrative and school staff, parents, community stakeholders, and our union groups. After I presented to you in April, you guys gave me the suggestion to formally invite our union groups, which I did, and they have been participating this year. We do have, as far as the school site wellness councils, that's the piece that we're working on currently. We have 17 schools that we've been piloting with within the San Diego and the Hoover Cluster. They have their wellness council set up. It's still a work in progress, but they're all working on implementing wellness activities for not only students but for staff. Within the school site wellness councils, this slide just shows you who we would like to participate in those councils. It's not an all-inclusive or exclusive group. It's just those people that typically do participate. As far as implementation and timeline, this is a very general screen, but during the 15, 16 school year, we're asking that principals provide to the district wellness coordinator, which is myself, the name of the wellness lead for their school site, and what wellness meeting, where will wellness be talked about in a current meeting? What agenda, what will it be on? And then for the 16, 17 school year, we will be asking that all the schools implement all the required components, and that they complete the assessment tool, which we already have. I showed that to you guys last year in your packet. It's from the Alliance for a Healthier Generation, so we're totally ready to go with that piece. In year three, which will be school year 17, 18, we're asking that once they do their assessment tool, that they look at one to two activities at their school site that they want to do to either focus on student and/or staff wellness. We hope they pick one of each, because that's really our focus within the district-level council. Next steps for the wellness policy and the framework. This summer, we developed a PowerPoint presentation that's currently for principals. It's being vetted right now through senior leadership. We also developed wellness letters to go out to families and staff, again, being vetted through senior leadership. And in April, after the policy passed, we posted information on the principal's page. We did it again in July, just as a refresher. So as soon as we get those letters and those PowerPoints approved, that'll go up on the principal's page and be sent out to staff and family. So the goals of the wellness centers. There's been a lot of talk over the last year within Student Services regarding wellness centers. Part of the conversations I've had with Mrs. Martin over the last year have been that we have eight school-based health centers within the district, but we don't have enough community partners, clinic partners, to be able to have a school-based health center in every community. But we can have a wellness center in every community, in every school community. The ideal place, as far as conversations we've had with district partners, district stakeholders, community members, has been at our high school campuses. So this year, for 15, 16, even though it's a planning year, we're focusing on six high schools where there will be wellness centers and some level of activity happening within those centers. As far as Student Services goes, we'll be working with Youth Advocacy, the Mental Health Department leads, and our community partners and agencies. This isn't a standalone thing for Student Services. This is really a way of us going out and saying, Mrs. Martin has said it many, many times in meetings that I've been in with her and in presentations that I've heard her make, is that we are not the only ones responsible for making sure that our kids succeed in school. We have to rely on our community partners, all of those people within the community. And every wellness center will not look the same. It will be based truly on what are the needs of that school community. Okay, so sites that we're going to be focusing on for 15, 16, and, you know, incorporating, hopefully, a few schools, high schools every year, but those are the ones that we're focusing on this year, Crawford, Hoover, Lincoln, Morris, San Diego, and Sarah. Those are some of, on the right side, those are some of the services that, between our stakeholders, our community partners, and our principals and their leadership team, those are some of the things that they say are impacting their school sites every single day. So based on those things that they listed for us, we're looking as far as a branch, a Student Services branch, to figure out how can we get them some of those supports during 15, 16, even though this is a planning year for us. Again, I guess what I really want to reiterate is that a wellness center is kind of the overarching support for students. And in that wellness center, there could be a variety of providers, whether they're district providers or community providers, that are there so that families in that community can come and access the service. I can tell you, as a site nurse for over 18 years, it was very frustrating to me to make referral after referral after referral after referral to families, and the barrier was getting to the place I was referring them to. When I could get those partnerships to come onto my middle school campus, I had much more success with my families, because I could literally walk them over to our Family Resource Center. So even though Family Resource Centers in a community are very, can be very narrow in scope, we're actually wanting these wellness centers to be very broad in scope. Our current state, we're holding monthly meetings. Our current state, we're holding monthly meetings with all of our community partners. We just had a stakeholder meeting, too, in the month of October. We meet monthly with those six principals. We're working to, with facilities, to actually identify specific spaces in each of our high schools. We have those identified. Now, it's a matter of what does the facility need in order to really run a wellness center? At Lincoln, we don't need anything except for startup costs, computers, supplies, a copier. We have everything within that wellness center to be up and running. We just need that, those small things. And then, obviously, staff and community partners. Hoover, for example, is a huge open space that's going to need total reconstruction. So it's a matter of how do we do all that in order to meet the needs of that school community? But the spaces have been identified by the principals, and now we're just working on those next steps. So the next steps for the wellness centers are, like I said, fifteen, sixteen is a planning year. We're meeting with those principals and those leadership teams and stakeholders within the community for them to tell us what are the needs. Oh, we're working to create a business plan. This isn't something that I learned in nursing school and/or either one of my master's programs, was how to write a business proposal. But I did go to a leadership academy at Rutgers University this summer. And through Johnson &amp; Johnson, who sponsors this leadership training, we did get a mini-grant. And I'll be using the mini-grant to help me pay for somebody else to write a very creative business proposal for funding for these sites.
That update, the first two updates that you just heard were related to the LCAP Goal Four Point One, which was providing social, emotional leads, needs, and the LCAP Goal Four Point Two, student health and wellness. And now, we have also committed to supports for youth in transition. And what we're doing is, we keep talking about the LCAP document being kind of dry and hard to understand and hard to follow. And we want to, when we do the monthly update, to tell the story. And I think of the LCAP as the place where we make public promises. We work together all year long developing the LCAP, and then we promise each other something. And then, throughout these monthly updates, we talk about how we're doing on the promises that we've made to our community and where are we in our implementation. So with that, Vanessa Peters and Youth in Transition.
Hello. Thank you. So as you can see, these are our goals that we're working on. It's really a collaborative effort with a lot of departments to put this forward. But the Youth in Transition is really goal and instrumental in building those school sites to capacity so they have the knowledge where students can go and feel safe and get those resources and support. So we really feel that it's a collaborative effort. And as you can see, we have our numbers of students that we serve. And it's really important that as we look at this, that identification is so important because it gives, again, the access to resources and supports within the district as well as outside. And as you can see, we've been known to support through this office, the homeless, the military, and the foster. And now, we also are branching out to include our refugee population as well as probation. And it's really, we found there was a lot of barriers to students getting access to their education and resources because we haven't identified students that are refugee. And it's really important that there's barriers for them getting, moving along and making academic progress. So we're really working on that direct service to those students as we identify them. And really, with our students identified in probation is, once they do return to us, making sure that they are connected and re-engaged and feel comfortable to come to school and make academic progress. So I know we're known for our events, but events are something that are really instrumental as we look at basic needs for students, as well as mentoring and supports. Because not only do we touch students that are identified as youth in transition, but sometimes we touch more students at that school site. And really looking at that students that maybe are not identified to us really still have those barriers that are impacting them. Maybe it's shoes, or clothing, or food for breaks. Or sometimes feeling positive to interact with other district departments, like our tribune buddies, our mentoring that we partner with them, and youth advocacy, to really bring on some long-term positive supports. And again, overall, it's really important as a department that we're looking at students making academic progress, that we want them attending school and being successful. So through that, we have a lot of academic supports that we coordinate through our office, as well as working with those school sites to help, to support and help. And again, attendance is really important because our students are extremely at risk due to their residential and environmental factors. And sometimes, that can be a barrier for them to even come to school. So our goal is to take away those barriers, get them to school, make sure they feel comfortable and safe, and figure out where those gaps are. And so, we have a continuum of supports and resources that the office coordinates or supports as well.
Yeah, and I know you're respecting the idea that we don't like to read slides, but I just have to point out the, and thank you for not doing that, having a dialogue up here. I know the board appreciates that. But the last two bullets are really important, the way that your office supports students who are released from juvenile hall and making sure that once they're released, we're coordinating, they're not just released, then they show up on a campus and we don't know their story, what they've been, what's happening in their lives. We use support re-enrolling those students so that they're welcomed into a district-identified school and we, there's a link to, you've been released, now you're in our hands and we're taking it further to support you. And then, the last bullet about collaborating with the juvenile delinquent and dependent judges for education as well, that that's the type of work that you do. And that, the way that we partner, of course, its divisions are working together, the silos are down within our district, but also the way that you coordinate with outside agencies so that we welcome our students in. So thank you for not reading the slides, but I had to pull those two out.
There is definitely a key one. I think that is something that is new through a law that passed now that we get a daily notification who is being released. And so, having that information is, I think it's vital to knowing our students and are they reconnected? And then, if they are reconnected, is there gaps for them in their education and how do we support that? So it's really tracking that, working with the schools and ensuring that they realize also do their records come with them quickly and efficiently. So we are doing that as a process, and we are looking at also expanding that to give some additional, maybe check and connect support for those students that maybe wouldn't reengage easily. And then, our quarterly meetings with the judges are instrumental in us collaborating around. And then, I think a couple of things that we do rely on our community partners for a lot of this to happen, because I think a lot of times, our community agencies do so much on the outside, and we have to realize that we need to bring them into the schools and be a continuum of support. I think as, this is one of the goals that, we started through the LCAP last year, and I have to say, it was very successful for the first year. I felt very positive in how many staff that came out for training and awareness. And I know that Cherokee Point has really been instrumental, bringing awareness for trauma-informed practices. And now, it's expanded that we've touched so many staff members and to the point that now we're going on to the next phase. And we have ten schools that have really taken that on to become trauma-informed. And Hoover, Crawford, Mann, Montgomery, and I know, just to read it so you guys know some things that are happening out there. Carson, Ross, Lincoln, Bell, Miramar Ranch, I think these schools realize the importance. And there's complete school sites that have been trained, and they can see the impact, again, of how we create a safe, positive environment, how that climate impacts student attendance, behavior, how all that links together. And having those trauma-informed practices is key. And it does go hand in hand with restorative practices. So we are partnering closely with Dr. Moore's office and how do we infringe those, you know, those trainings together? How do we come and say, "You have to be trauma-informed to implement restorative practices," and ensure that all sites are having access to that? And that's going to be ongoing and continuing this year.
That's inconsistent with what we continually say, is that we find these programs that are working and we want to invest, replicate, take to scale. And Cherokee Point and Crawford and Hoover had trauma-informed practices, restorative justice in place. And now, we're seeing the expansion of that. A large group of staff members attended a screening of the movie Paper Tigers recently at the theater here in Hillcrest. And I know Stephanie Brown, principal at Montgomery, has secured the license to do a screening of it at her site to expand the conversation about people really needing to understand the brain-based research around trauma-informed care and what that actually means, how the brain is affected, and how, when staff members are informed, how do we meet students when they've experienced that type of trauma? So it starts small, and then people begin to talk at the grassroots level and through the middle, principals to principals, teachers to teachers, and the community conversation has started. And Youth in Transition ends up being a centerpiece for that as they connect to all these partners. So we appreciate that work. So next steps?
And I'd also like to bring the Paper Tigers to a larger screening in the spring would be my goal.
Okay.
Yes. So I think it goes on to that coordinated effort, again, with district departments and community agencies. I think our students are impacted with their suspension and attendance. So we have to work together, you know, second language, all those issues, special education. So again, it's continuing on those collaborations together, identifying the students that are most at risk, and how do we continue to bring those supports and services, tracking and making some impacts with absenteeism and all those areas as well. So those will be our next steps.
Good evening, Board. This, our piece on restorative practices, if I could go all the way back to Slide Eight, where that had the gears, I just want you to, again, picture that. Because when we began this work in 2014 on restorative practices, Student Services was a larger department than Youth Advocacy just this year, has sort of separated. And inside Youth Advocacy is our Placement and Appeal Department, which is really, Felicia Singleton, our program manager of Placement and Appeals, really taking the lead on restorative practices for our district. And so, what I'm going to present about that is, that work in addition to all of the partners and work that we're doing within the district and breaking down the silos between our departments to ensure that we have a cohesive plan. Again, if you recall, on July twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, we put this notion out about becoming a restorative district. And we had a list of pilot schools, Morris, Hoover, Crawford, Lincoln, San Diego High, Madison, and CPMA, that were all directly involved in our initial efforts around restorative. Folks were trained. We partnered with a partner organization, NCRC, the National Conflict Resolution Center. And we began doing restorative circles, not just restorative circles for disciplinary action, but also having teachers try on restorative circles inside the classroom as a means to build up student voice and address issues at that classroom level. And so, those schools that participated would meet monthly with our consultant from NCRC, her name's Justine Darling. And they would talk about some of the challenges and some of the things that were working well for restorative practices. The entire approach really rests on this notion of understanding impact and repairing harm. That's in the middle of the blue portion of the first graphic. And I'm not suggesting here that it's because of restorative practices that in fourteen, fifteen, the next slide, and we'll talk a little bit more about this in our next presentation, but the suspension rates have steadily been trending downward. And last year, we did implement restorative practices. And plus, as Linda Truesdale just presented, PBIS, and we're working on wellness centers, all of these things combined are really leading us to address our students in a different way and look for alternatives to suspension instead of suspension as a first resort of disciplinary action. I must tell you that the big piece of our presentation today was going to be a video that was shot to kind of encapsulate the work of restorative justice and restorative practices last year. It was a video that was featuring some Crawford students primarily. It was done by some Kearney students. The link to the video is in your board documents. And for the sake of time, it's an eleven-minute video, and unfortunately, we thought our presentation was a little bit earlier. I know there had been a call from the board because this video was supposed to be shown back, I think, in July or August of this year. But we're, again, in the interest of time, I encourage you all to look at your board documents and, of course, the board, and look at the item because the link is there. It's uploaded for all to see. We will be posting it on our district website as well. It's a great video that really encapsulates the work, and it features, again, students from Crawford primarily, as well as students and staff from Hoover and Crawford, talking about the effects of restorative justice. I want to just really quickly pop to our next steps because this is very important. It's a capacity-building model wherein we're going to be working, again, with our consultant to, from National Conflict Resolution Center, to train, first train key staff members. And that includes some folks from all of the departments that we've been mentioning, student services, all of the race human relations and advocacy, and other key district centralized departments, so that we can support this effort in all of our secondary schools. We would like for secondary schools to identify key staff members to be point persons for restorative practices. They can be teachers, they can be counselors and others. And those key persons will work with our team that we've, to support this work that we've created here and push this out into all of our schools to see how, start having schools really try on the work. So Point Three is identifying point persons at individual sites, train staff to support restorative, and continue to support youth groups. One of the very key pieces that we worked on last year, we had a restorative justice summit run by youth at University of San Diego last year. And again, that's a little bit encapsulated in that video, if you have a chance to watch that. But the key is getting our young people directly involved in this work. And there were some students from Crawford that wanted to make sure, and I say this, and that is to invite all of you every Friday in the morning. They have restorative justice circles. They open up the school day, actually, with that, and during their advisory time. And it's a student-led restorative justice circle where they just bring ideas to discuss in that circle format. I think last year, the superintendent and chief of staff had an opportunity to participate and see that work. And all the students at Crawford wanted to make sure that we're involved in that, wanted to make sure I personally invited you to that work. And that concludes this portion of our presentation.
So as you heard this evening, that's the update on our LCAP Goal Four, positive environments and school cultures and climates that are support, with equity at the core to support the whole child. That's something that the district has committed to as an aspirational goal in our LCAP. But what you see here is that it's beyond aspiration. It's the real work that it takes to make this happen for each and every student. And when you see the collaborative effort, we wanted to bring light to what's happening and how we are making progress on LCAP Goal Number Four.
Thank you. It was fantastic presentation. Do we have any update and maybe this, you know, question for Martha Alvarez on the rollout of the Prop Forty-Seven money? Because I would assume it's this work that would be the focus of that money that would come to schools and how can we put ourselves in position to?
We can look into that.
Yeah.
I don't have a current update as I sit here, but we can look into that.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to the staff for all you guys' work, working together to try to address this. And I think the biggest difference for me is looking at the number of expulsions or people we've kicked out of our schools. That has gone down by a hundred and seven human beings in the last two years. That is just amazing. And so, that's a hundred and seven lives that we can keep in our school and work with and help them to grow and learn from their mistakes through a different form of consequence. And that's really, I think, the thing that has to be said, is that when students are making mistakes, they're not just getting away with it. There are consequences. The consequences are very different with restorative justice, as opposed to just washing our hands clean and kicking them out, kicking them to the curb, because then they have less hope. And so, I really want to commend the work of the district and the superintendent and the board for really going down this path. And I look forward to us taking these practices district-wide as soon as possible. Thank you.
Trustee Buzzard, thank you for pointing out the data. As you heard tonight, the presentation didn't go over data slide after data slide after data slide. It's actually attached to tonight's board report in the appendix. But rather than look at charts, you just brought to light one of the specific data points around expulsion and the decrease in expulsion. What we wanted to focus on, the fact that the data is moving in the direction that we want. We have the goals that are committed to the actions and services. We want to talk about how did that happen? How did a hundred and something lives get affected in a different way? It's through our Positive Behavior Intervention Services, our wellness policy and framework, our Youth in Transition, our restorative practices. We're talking about the how that happened. So you watch the data move, you watch the dials move, and then you talk about how did that happen? And the dollars that we commit, the actions, the services, and the partnerships. When we start to see the data move, which is attached in the appendix, then we know how to keep doing things that are working, stop doing things that are not working, and increase and expand the things that are showing great promise. I appreciate you pointing out the data.
Yeah. And I actually look forward to these numbers getting even better when we start addressing our LGBT youth, because there's a lot of national data that shows that ninety percent of gainless being students are bullied in school. Nationally, over three hundred thousand Nationally, over 300,000 LGBT students do not go to school every day because they're afraid for their lives, or they're afraid of being bullied, or being beat up, or being harassed. So I look forward to seeing how the things that we can do to help protect those children will help move these numbers even more in the right direction.
Yeah, great report. Thank you very much. It's talking about the culture and the climate. People want to see increased test scores, and you want to take a look at children and what score did they have at the end of the year, and determine whether we've been successful or not, and to rate our teachers and our programs and our schools based on a single test score. We know that that's not true. We know that our schools are much more than that, our students are much more than that, and we want healthy schools. We want schools where children feel empowered and where we have a climate that is warm, that's welcoming, that is safe. And not only do we see the expulsions going down, we see suspensions going down, which talks to the improvement of school-wide efforts in creating places that are safe, that are friendly, that are welcoming, so that, and then we're creating the training and working with staff to know how to deal with issues and concerns in a restorative manner. So the entire fabric is there to make an incredible amount of difference, and I too look forward to numbers not only getting better, for numbers getting better, so that we're working with all students and all schools, and so that every child can succeed. And we don't have to wait for a lawsuit like they are facing in Compton about not dealing effectively with students with trauma. So we've been proactive on that and want to commend you for that, as well as the number of issues. We can also improve our climate and culture in schools by improving the way the schools look, and the fields, and the impression of schools. So we've got, we have some schools that have grass and trees and shade, and we have some schools that we learned this last weekend where students, when they go to lunch, put a book on their head to protect themselves from getting sunburned. And so we want to take a look at those areas where we can do adjustments in the effectiveness of the school based on the structure of schools. And we are doing our master plans, I think, we'll make a big effort with that as we put fields and grass in all of our elementary schools, will have a big impact on that so that when parents and students walk up to a school, they see a school that's welcoming, they feel good, they feel warm, they feel comfortable, and then there's good stuff that is going on. So not only does the school look good, but the school itself is practicing restorative practices where every child is acknowledged and recognized, and they are, they're growing.
You want the schools to be warm, but not too warm.
President, I'm sorry. So one thing I just wanted to comment on this and maybe kind of ask how we're going. So there was a story in the LA Times a couple of days ago about the effort to move, you know, restorative justice forward within LA Unified, and you know, it's, whatever the, sort of the angle from the reporter was, you know, whether it's accurate or not, the gist of it was that the LA Unified had, the Board had, as a policy, said, "We're now about restorative justice," which means we're not about the way that we used to discipline students. And the effect in classrooms was teachers and counselors and principals and people at the schools feeling like, okay, now we're, now we know what we're not supposed to do anymore, but where's the counseling and the support and the resources, you know, to allow us to move towards what we're trying to do? And that without that kind of, you know, support, it sounded like there was a lot of frustration, you know, at the classroom level about, well, all this really means is now we've got students who are out of control in our classroom, and we don't know, you know, what we're supposed to do. I think that the, you know, what Superintendent Martin and the staff have consistently talked to us about is implementation has to be done carefully, and that's what I'm hearing about, you know, starting this in identified sites where we can bring the resources there, we can bring the training there, we can implement successfully, and then from there, you know, we can, we can expand and take to scale, rather than just, you know, feel good about ourselves sitting up here saying we passed a policy and then not, really not, you know, thinking about how that policy, what the consequences of those policies are, you know, without a strong implementation strategy. So I wonder if, you know, Superintendent Martin and Vernon and any of you guys could sort of comment on how you feel it's rolling out, you know, here in our district?
Well, it was clear to us that it's not just about change the policy and take away the 10 reasons to mandatorily expel kids, and Board passed that policy. It had to do with what happens when, what kinds of tools, strategies, resources, responses do teachers need to have and school sites need to have. So exactly tonight, when we talked about the how of Positive Behavior Interventions, the restorative practices, the wellness centers, and on one of the slides, on the right side, it was all the things that, what wellness centers can do to support students, what community partners can do to support students, we just featured tonight the partnership with United Way, and some of the counseling services that are provided by community agencies that, Michelle Bell talked about making referrals, and as a school nurse, you would make a referral and then not really know if anything happened. And some of the issues that our students are facing will not just be addressed by the teacher in the classroom having five more tools in their tool belt. Of course, we want to make sure they have tools and strategies, but it's not just the teacher in the classroom, it's the entire collective impact, community approach. And in the Hoover Cluster, we see an example of a collective impact approach where we start holding community partners responsible and accountable for the outcomes when they're working on student supports, and let's say it's counseling service or health services, that's an example. I don't know if staff wants to comment more about what we're doing to respond so it's not just Board pass a policy and go figure it out yourself. That's not how we've done this.
We came to a point where we were really considering, and other districts have done this, including LA Unified, about abolishing suspensions for defiance and disruption. We, as a Board and as a district, haven't done that. There's a law, of course, K through 3, and it can't be used as an expulsion, that particular reason, but, so there are schools that are still dealing with that and working through using suspension and using other alternative means of dealing with student behavior. But that's the very key that Superintendent Martin just iterated, is that it's been very methodical and very planned, and I think when I read that LA Times article, what jumped out to me was that schools were told, you know, basically what they had done in the past, they could no longer do, and that was mostly in terms of suspension, but weren't given the tools and the resources to handle students and work with students in a different way. And I think that's been probably one of the biggest differences in the effort here, is that we're being very methodical, plotting very specifically and strategically as to how we're going to push out this effort, certainly restorative practices, which a lot, there's a lot of questions about, and a lot of people, a restorative circle is as good as the facilitator is trained. And so the better training we have, the better we support the efforts, the better we allow the staff and faculty to try on the effort, the better the effort will go, and I think that's been our major, our major feature.
It's a tiered approach. We'll start, always start in the classroom, making sure we have support for good first teaching in the classroom, tier-one instruction. When tier-one instruction meets students at the point of need, then they're less likely to misbehave, make choices that would cause them to have to leave a classroom learning environment. So you begin with the supports there, and that's the work of the instructional team, the area superintendents, the classroom walkthroughs that I participate in, and what area superintendents participate in, and supporting principals to say, do our teachers have the tools, skills, strategies they need for tier-one instruction or good first teaching in the classroom? You begin there and then extend past that, the counseling services, guidance services, restorative practices, trauma-informed care, school level, what can we do? And then it goes out to the community level. So it's, no, it's not on the shoulders of one individual at a school set to try to figure out how to meet the diverse needs of our students. And just when you saw Vanessa, and even in just in youth in transition, whether you're talking about military students or students who are just coming back from juvenile hall, we have many types of students, youth in transition alone, many different needs and different skill sets needed to meet those needs, whether it's how do you receive them back in the classroom, how do you receive them back in the school, are there healthcare services in the community, do they have the housing they need, do they have the food they need? It's a multi-tiered approach with many agencies, but it begins with strategic coordinated efforts from the superintendent level and having the divisions work together in response to really visionary board policy, and then how do we implement that in a way that's coherent, strategic, and across the system?
Excuse me. And thank you very much. The presentation is very good, and it's really helped us to be informed about this. And at the risk of oversimplifying things, I'm thinking about Joe or Mary Taxpayer, who is, you know, says we're providing money for the schools, and what are we getting? And what they basically want to do is, as taxpayers, is send our kids to school to learn a lot of things and become good citizens. And they're not aware of all of the different jargon and things that we talked about and so forth. I think they certainly get about the environment that we want for our schools, and we passed these propositions to upgrade our facilities, and we've certainly expanded that to the social, emotional environment, as Dr. Mike was talking about. But I think some other things, and I would like to ask, and if you can just give, if it's possible, like a 60-second answer, it's more like an elevator speech, but first of all, they would ask, what the heck is a wellness center? And what would you say?
Michelle, you're on. Do you want to try it?
Go.
So in 60 seconds, I would say that a wellness center is intended to be a place where families and students come to get and receive support from our community agencies as well as district staff.
And when you say support, what?
So mental health resources, food, clothing, shelter, 211 information, pretty much anything that Student Services, Youth Advocacy, Counseling Services, Mental Health Resources, and our Youth Advocacy program, any of those things that we support and/or have community contracts with, that's what the wellness centers would offer, based on what the needs of that school community is.
So it'd be basically the things that would get in the way of them getting a good education?
Right.
Okay. So, so what's this thing called, Trauma-Informed Care?
It's like, it's like a quiz. Staff is ready.
Trauma-informed care is basically a philosophy. It's practices that we utilize, how we interact with each other and with students within our environment, and so it's, it's how we approach each other and students in that create a positive, safe environment. So it's teaching us that our actions can have an impact on how we approach that student, how we create our environment, how we interact, how we identify a student that maybe is not on the path that we want or following directions, and how we approach them might be, being trauma-informed might be, that approach might be different than how, you know, we think as an educator we might approach them. So it's giving them, it's difficult to explain, I'm not sure I'm doing it well.
But I mean, because I might think, okay, Trauma-Informed Care, we're not in a war. What are you talking about in terms of trauma?
Well, I think that's, that's a great question, because I think when we think of our students, we think of trauma being like something significant happened. So we can identify that with youth being removed from the home, that might be traumatizing, or maybe a student that's unsheltered or being displaced from their home, kicked out for reasons or something. So that is an obvious reason, but students can be traumatized from a parent being deployed, or a parent having an illness, or a student having an illness, or a pet dying. So we can't determine a student's being trauma, but they might have trauma in their life, and different things can trigger it by our interactions. By asking a student to remove their hat might be a trigger for them. So how do I come in a safe way as I approach that student, how I interact, how I pair people up? So again, it's having those practices to be aware of my own skill set and how I bring that in my relationships and interactions with others. It's really about that, developing relationships, appropriate relationships among staff and students, and creating a safe environment.
There's a really powerful scene in the movie Paper Tigers where the teacher puts up a list of things that may have happened to you, and he said, what was it?
It's the ACE survey that?
The ACEs survey, yes. That was here in San Diego, and the ACEs study was done here in San Diego that talks about, what was this, what does the acronym stand for again? I forgot.
Well, now that you're putting it on the spot.
Adverse childhood experiences. Thank you. Adverse childhood experiences. So the teacher put up the adverse childhood experiences on the slide and said to the students, how many of you have had one of these things happen to you? How many of you had two, three, four, five? And you look at these adverse childhood experiences that actually change the brain and change the way students able to interact, and so when you say Trauma-Informed Care, you're redefining, we're educating staff on what trauma is, and some of those things on that list are not the things that you would assume. It's not a car accident or something major that we consider major, it's things like one parent's not in the home, the list is?
Divorce, it's very extensive, the list, and some things that happened to a lot of our families and students.
Good, thank you very much.
And I do, one thing to point at that is that a lot of our staff that went to the first training, when they looked at that survey, the study and the results, a lot of them realized that maybe they were traumatized, or our staff is, and sometimes we have to start there, and having them be informed.
Good. So another thing, taxpayer, I want the kids to be, you know, well-behaved, disciplined, you know, all that kind of stuff. So what's this thing about restorative justice and practices, what's that about?
So I had the benefit of, you know, preparing, but it really comes down to, it really comes down to addressing impact and understanding impact and repairing harm. So in a school's a community, when the rules or the norms of the community are violated, restorative practices is work and a philosophy wherein, instead of just issuing out a consequence related to the violation, it's really gathering around a student or anyone, but in this particular case, a student who has committed a violation and understanding, making sure that student understands that impact and understands what it's going to require to repair the harm that the impact has created, and it's really holding the entire community accountable for what's going on, not just issuing a punishment and see the student two days later.
So if I got a traffic ticket from a cop, could I have a restorative circle?
You know, ideally, that would be, yeah, ideally, that would be a lot better because you would understand the impact of speeding through or running through a red light, and the safety impact, as opposed to, you know, just saying, oh, I got pulled over unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. And just one other thing unrelated, which I didn't say during my board report, since we're on TV, I just want to say hi to my family and to my, to my beautiful wife and my three wonderful children. I love you very much. Thank you.
Well, I want to also thank Trustee Evans for his participation in the, in the board presentation and the report, because he summed it up nicely with the, with the pop quiz. So thank you, thank you for that. But thank you for your leadership in putting together the integrative plan and services, and I do, like with my fellow board members and superintendent, look forward to that going to scale, because we know that each and every school and every classroom, the whole school campus throughout the district, needs to benefit from that. So we can't, we can't wait, and we want to do whatever we can to support it. So thank you. So we're, oh my goodness, so we're moving on to E3. Oh, yeah, E3.
E3 is somewhat connected, so some staff members will stay here and some, I'm going to invite a team up. This is, E3 is a quarterly report that was requested by the Board. When we were making some changes last year, systemic efforts to be able to close the achievement gap, and when you make systemic change instead of siloed change or small little changes, it generates lots of interest, noise, confusion, worry, fear, hope, promise, and so when we had a lot of people confused and concerned and fearful possibly, fearful as well as hopeful about the changes that we're making with these changes, really work for kids? Are we really engaging stakeholders? Are we listening to on-the-ground what's happening? The Board had asked that, although you fully understood what we were doing, why we were doing it, the rollout for it, the Board was concerned, frankly, about the pace of change and were we, was this actually going to work? We had lots of promises and commitments about it working, but you said you believed in it, you supported the changes as I brought them forward, and said, great, go for it. We see how these strategies are going to hopefully deliver on some of the closing the achievement gap strategies that we wanted, but Superintendent, come back every quarter and let us know how it's going. So that's what tonight is, it's a quarterly report, and specifically, you asked us to come back and report on English learners, students with disabilities, African-American students, and counseling services, because we were making systemic changes. So what you see tonight, while I was doing the introduction, is the entire team has come up to join us as we present a quarterly update. We have Bruce Bivins, Area 1 Superintendent. We have Bruce Bivins, Area 1 Superintendent, Fabiola Bagula, Area 6 Superintendent, Linda Truesdale, our Executive Director of Student Services, serving in that capacity at this time, and then Vernon Moore, our Executive Director of Office of Youth Advocacy, Sonia Picos, our Executive Director, oh, so, Executive Director of Special Education, Lorelei Olson, our Director of Special Education, Sandra Saifus, our Director of the Office of Language Acquisition, might be the first time some of you are meeting Sandra back there, recently Principal Bethune, Teresa Liskowski is our Program Manager from the Office of Language Acquisition, and Francisca Del Carmen Aguilar, our Program Manager from the Office of Secondary Schools. So, as you can see, in order to give a quarterly update on these four very important areas, it takes a collaborative effort. And we're making shifts. We're not just randomly deciding what to do and think, oh, that might be a good idea. They're very intentional shifts. And the intentional shifts that we've made around English learners, around students with disabilities, supports for African-American students and in our counseling division, those shifts were made in collaboration and in a way that the teams are going to need to work together. So, what you'll see tonight is a presentation around where we are in each of these areas and how those shifts are impacting students. We'll begin with the essential question that we asked ourselves to put this board report together. We asked ourselves, how do our current organizational structures support improving the learning outcomes for each and every student? If we make a shift in our management team, in the way that our departments are organized and the way that we're providing services to school, we're making that shift not because we just feel like it, but because we're planning to impact the learning outcomes, not for some students, but for each and every student. So, what happens in counseling, in special education, in youth advocacy? What has happened in those shifts? And so, with that essential question, we asked, the first one is, how do we create school and classroom environments that inspire students to attend school every day? How do we create school and classroom environments that reduce the elevated suspension and expulsion rates? And then, does the data reveal any patterns that may suggest groups of students that are at a higher risk of failure? With that, the first question that Linda's going to address is the attendance rates by grade level. We are going to look at a teeny bit of data. We're not spending a lot of time on it, but then specifically, what is happening for these groups of students? These shifts that we've made should have made a difference. Let's hear about that now from Linda.
Thank you. As we're looking at this, we're thinking in terms of the lenses of the promising practices and the strategies that we had initially that we shared, and then how those then layer into an additional lens of data that we're looking at now. And so, I'm just going to hit upon a few things that were just interesting and unique as we looked at the data. I looked at the ninth grade because we're always thinking about meaningful graduation, and I looked at the data drops a little bit in terms of the attendance rates in grade nine. You know, we see a little, an interesting movement along the way, but that makes me pause and wonder, do we need to do some exploration? Is it that transition from middle school to high school? Why do we see a little bit of a depth at that particular area? Oh, did I go too far? There we go. Then when we looked at them by cluster, we were thinking in terms of where do we want to focus on? And again, we went to the place of the appreciative lens and we wanted to look at, I missed, I'll get this figured out eventually. We'll go back. We'll go back to the cluster slide. When we looked at this, I was looking at the student groups because that's really important for us to pay attention to. And we see some areas of really significant growth. When we look at our English learners and then we look at our students who are reclassified, there's a large percentage of students who are reclassified that are attending at a very high level. So, that's something we want to pay attention to. We want to capitalize on what's drawing them to school. It's awesome, they're more engaged in school. So, again, that gets us to that engagement, that meaningful participation when we've looked at the checks data previously. We also wanted to ground our work in research and we know that 96% points is where we're looking at in terms of absenteeism, chronic absenteeism. And we really noticed a data trend in both absentee and chronic absenteeism at K1, 9, and 12. So, again, areas that we want to pay attention to as we're moving forward in our work. Is it a specific student group that's creating this? Is it in our K1? Because sometimes in kinder families might feel that it's an optional school year, so do we have to drill down a little bit more as our students get older? Is it about our foster, our homeless, our military populations? But really thinking about that. We're, you know, our English learners are at the same rate as our other students. And then, we've started looking at a little more specific around lower attendance in some of our other populations. As we looked at this by cluster, we saw some really nice, strong gains across the way. Again, attendance, it's got, it's got an interesting pattern that we have to unpack and we have to continue to look at it. When we look at cluster data, I think in terms of, it shows you the whole cluster, but there's a part of me that needs that story of elementary, middle, high school. And, you know, I need to see that scope and sequence to determine. We have it at the grade level, but then I need to see it at that school level. I need to take the SARA cluster and really look at the school-specific data. So, that would be that next level that we'd be looking at. I was concerned, again, at the increase that we're seeing in the chronic absenteeism. So, these are our students who are absent 10% or more of the time. So, that's at least 18 days a year. So, is this because of an absence? Is it because of some type of misbehavior? We have to really spend some time thinking again at that K, that first, that ninth and that 12th grade year. We see in the middle, we see a little uptake in that chronic absenteeism, but it's not as glaring as those two opposite ends of our continuum. And if we really want to get to that meaningful graduation, we have to figure out, is it about the participation? Is it about something that we're doing within our classroom instruction, our environments? How do we find out more data in this particular area? And then, we looked again at that notion of, you know, Henry's doing a really awesome job, the Henry Cluster. So, they're maintaining their levels and let's think about, you know, why that's happening. Let's go there and study. Do they have certain programs, incentives, other things that they put in place at the cluster level that makes it more engaging for our students to be there? And truly, our problem of practice as we looked at this was that chronic absenteeism rate. That's where we really have to shine our flashlight, take some time to dig down deeper into the data and determine what are the causes? Is it something that we could benefit from maybe having some more supports from a wellness center or having some restorative practices? You know, we need to do some more data searching in terms of what are the true causes for the chronic absence because often we'll find if we start to take case studies in students, there are a lot of layers of complexity in some of our students' profiles who have that chronic absenteeism. So, we need to spend some clear time around that. And in the next quarterly report, we gave you some of our solution strategies. We looked at some of the things that we want to look at in terms of attendance each and every day. We need to enhance our systems. So, at our next quarterly report, we'll bring back some additional information around solution strategies we're looking at. I know that our Nursing and Wellness Office is putting in some protocols around attendance. So, we can share some things like that at the next quarterly report. And with that, Dr. Moore is going to share about suspension and expulsion.
Linda, could I just ask, so, I appreciate the look at the data and I appreciate the potential solutions that we're talking about, but we did see, you know, a slight move in the wrong direction consistently from 13, 14 to 14, 15. So, do we have any sense of why?
We weren't able to tell at this moment in time when we looked at the data. We have to go deeper into more of that student level, that school-specific data. We tried, I asked the data folks to try pulling it out. Do we have a difference between students who are attending their neighborhood school, students who are choosing choice? And we weren't able to tease it out at that initial level to the depth and complexity to understand what's happening. So, we need to do some more exploration.
At what point do we start the SARB process? SARB process?
You mean, it's really after the, it can be after the third or fourth or fifth unexcused absence, but really after the third, the school can start. But it's a pretty involved process at the site level with the student attendance review team and some other intervention strategies prior to the case coming all the way to the SARB office.
Right. I'm familiar with some schools that start the SARB process much earlier and find phenomenally better intervention strategies and rates for the long-term chronic absent students. So, that's something that I think that we ought to take a look at as a district, take a look at starting that SARB process earlier because the earlier you can nip it in the bud, the better outcomes you can have for those children. And that needs to happen right away. And I think it's great that we have, you know, some schools could start it after five days or six, three to four days. So, I mean, you know, after there's three unexcused absences, we need to get in there right away and try to figure out what's involved there. You know, as a teacher, I've been involved in the SARB process at my schools many times because at my school, they invite the teachers to attend and not all the teachers can attend all the SARB meetings, but it really helps to get the connection of the parents so the parents understand the legal implications and the weight and the value of their child and their child's education. And then, the other thing that I was thinking about in terms of looking at the success of the Henry Cluster in terms of attendance is that I am familiar with some of those schools having very rigorous Saturday school attendance recovery programs. To what extent are, do different clusters or schools have Saturday school attendance recovery programs with fidelity to try to get that attendance rate up? I know there are a lot of schools that I've learned of that have very rigorous Saturday school attendance programs, and as a result, the school's attendance rate is over 99%.
So, in the last presentation about the LCAP update, remember I said the data was in the appendix? We put up some of the data at the beginning of this report, but I really want to get into the meat of the report. So, as Dr. Moore can talk about, the next set of slides is about suspension rates, expulsion rates. The slides are there for you to look at. You can see the data. You can see where we haven't seen progress yet, where we have. Slide 18, if we can skip to that quickly. You can see the drop in expulsion rates that we've talked about. And we can see, if you want to talk, Dr. Moore, about slide 19, that the overall rates continue to decrease. Did you have something to say about that one? And then, I want to get into...
Superintendent Martin, could I, is there the ability to answer my question about Saturday school attendance recovery programs or...
I don't know that this staff here has the exact answer.
Okay.
I would have to investigate that.
Okay. I would really appreciate a board memo on those kinds of strategies, please. Thank you.
A related question I have that is, because I believe I asked this at some point, but as far as the tracking system, you know, within a school about how many times a student is even absent, and even when Trustee Advisor was talking about the excused absences versus unexcused, I mean, I'm sure a lot of chronic absenteeism is due to excused absences as well for various reasons. And excused is a pretty broad term in terms of how it gets excused depending on the parents. So, when someone's sitting at a school, and at what point are they aware that there's an attendance problem with our current tracking system? What pops up to say this person has reached this point, is nearing the 10% absentee pointer? Is there anything like that that you know of?
Well, of course, our Power School system is where our attendance is kept. And I know sites are developing monitoring teams around looking at attendance and attendance trends. It is something that I think we're going to have to take a more centralized approach to make sure there's consistency throughout.
And let me put it in context, because we started tonight's presentation with attendance data, we can come up with some solutions to go after attendance directly and make sure Power School flags us, put Saturday school to make it up. Those are solutions that of course are important, but the point of tonight's presentation is the quarterly update specifically on students with disabilities, English learners, our counseling services, and Office of Youth Advocacy with African-American students. And that's what, we will see the attendance rates change, the expulsion rates change, the data that's behind this slide change, not just because you go directly after it, but when you put the services in place through special education, through youth advocacy, through English learners. So, not to say that there aren't direct strategies like Saturday school and Mr. Advisor, we will get you that information. Do we flag kids when they have the 18 days? Or how soon do we get it? And how quickly can we put SARB in place? Those are important, but we're talking about the systemic approaches and the quarterly update. And so, I'd like to move to that part of the presentation.
And so, just real quick on slide 18, it's really almost a 90%. I mean, we talk about 50 percentage points, but it's really about almost a 90% decrease in expulsions between 13, 14, and 14, 15. And, you know, in suspensions and expulsions, there's an overall decrease for all student groups. I don't know if you recall when I mentioned the sites that were using restorative practices, but where we're seeing that is the same sites Hoover, Lincoln, Morris, and the San Diego Cluster. In those areas, those high schools certainly were part of that initial restorative pilot and they've also been using PBIS. So, we're seeing, again, 41, and that should say percentage points. That's the reduction that we're seeing. Really, our next steps, when we talk about suspension and expulsion rates, is looking really further in the data because are a bulk of our students that really fall into these categories, students with disabilities, African-American students, Latino students, are they being suspended for defiance disruption? And let's take a look at that and call that out and take it. So, mining the data is very important. Obviously, implementing practical alternative strategies, we went over restorative practices and PBIS, and ensuring that we're providing an equal opportunity and equity opportunity for all of our kids. We know that grade nine is a tough year, and so, I think we're really putting in some transition pieces at grade nine. Certainly, the counselors at some identified schools are working specifically with grade nine. We need to really zero in on Madison and Lincoln Clusters and what's going on there. And then, the next two bullet points about English learners and students with disabilities, I really think that's the bulk of this presentation because this is where we begin to, again, break down the silos and you'll start to see all of our departments, youth advocacy, student services, secondary schools, area superintendents, Office of Language Acquisition, all working together to address these very, very important issues.
And with that, I think Fabiola is going to come up and talk about how the work is changing that will impact the data that you just saw and the way our work is changing, how we used to organize and how we're organizing now to see the impact that we'd like to see.
Good evening. About a year and a half ago, I was still principaling at Balboa Elementary School. And I, this, actually, this graphic and this theme is really important to me because I will tell you that every Tuesday after the board report, I anxiously waited to see who was where now. You know, all those reports, who was being principal here, who has moved to this office? Not to look at vacancies because I love my school, but to look at who was in pivotal positions that would then help me continue to run my school effectively. And it was those informal networks that I would rely on of, oh, good. And actually, I was joking with Sonia Picos that when she went into special ed, I thought, yes, I have her on text. I can use this information. And actually, but at the same time, hold the tension of, I can only approach her with certain issues because I don't want to overwhelm her or use that emergency card all the time. It is those informal networks that really continue to only be reactive measures. So, I only accessed the people that I knew when I had an issue, when I had an emergency, not in a proactive way.
And if you knew them?
Yes.
What if somebody got put in charge of a division and you didn't happen to know them and you didn't have them on text and you really needed it as a principal?
Yes.
Well, now what do I do? Because it might not have been the support you needed when you needed it.
Right. And then, there was an issue of credibility too, right? Of, you know, my work at Balboa, I need your help. If I'm asking you for help, it's serious. And so, there's that informal issue that we can't do anymore. We have to work in a systemic way, in a collaborative way, in a collective way of support, of being proactive. And so, that story is changing and we're, I'm really aware, especially actually, speaking to Bruce before this, we have a lot of new principals. We have a lot of new people in our systems, not just new principals to principalship, but new people to our district. And so, to have them try to figure out who to call for support would almost be impossible. And so, this way of reorganizing our work, of collective work, of being proactive, of seeing things together is really empowering. So, for example, one of the things that we're doing is as area superintendents, as we do our walkthroughs, that is the bulk of our work. We do learning walks with our principals to go and look at classroom instruction, provide feedback, leadership coaching, that kind of thing. We are taking these representatives from our different departments with us. So, for example, we just, I just spent time with my middle schools at both Crawford and Hoover and taking a... and taking a race and human relation counselor with us, a special education administrator, or two ELSTs. Other principals actually also went on this walkthrough, so it's no longer just between myself, between the area superintendent and the principal, but it's a whole team effort. And we set our agenda, we talk about our strengths, we talk about what we bring to the table, what our lens will do as we do these walkthroughs, and how we can support each other. And I know that I have left those meetings by stating, we are not alone. We are not alone, you have a supportive network around you, you have numbers to reach, you have people to come help problem solve, but also you have people to come help proactively set up structures to ensure that we're ensuring classroom instruction, positive classroom instruction, strong classroom instruction for each and every student. And so, I know this graphic that kind of surrounds the school, so before the school was alone and would just kind of reach out to the networks that they knew, now we have like this bubble around the school of support. And so, that's really important for our work because we want to make sure, I know you've heard about breaking down the silos, well, we want to do further than that and be San Diego unifiers, and really go out and collectively structure our work and to leverage all of our strengths and to support our schools.
You can see in the graphic there, the pink circle is instructional cabinet with the area superintendents, and that green team is the team that goes with the area superintendents to support the needs at the different sites and at the different clusters, and it's a structural change of how we organize our work, but you just described how you, as an area superintendent, are able to use that instead of different departments going and coming up with something to do to a school, it's figuring out with the school what is needed and how the team is surrounding them to provide the tools they need.
Yes, and so, one of my favorite examples right now, for example, we have a race and human relations counselor that's tied to each area, and we're discussing strategies for supporting our students in transitional years, specifically from eighth grade to ninth grade. I think there's a lot of social, emotional work that we need to do in that transition, it's a very important transition, and so, how do we then start thinking proactively on this transition, how we support our students? So, I think that's a really beautiful proactive conversation, again, supporting each and every one of our students, but also supporting our principals.
And Bruce will talk about how this coordinated team approach on Slide 23 creates the continuous cycle of improvement.
Yes, so, I think many of these points have been already reinforced today, but I'll say a few extras.
If I switch to Slide 23?
Oh, yeah, thanks. I'm in control of the slide.
[laughing].
All right. So, our theory of action is that we need to build capacity with all stakeholders, and our area focus is quality tier-one first-time instruction for all learners. The way we do this is through a cycle of continuous improvement, analyzing data, that's the triangulation of data from state to district to local assessments at the school level, looking at how we are defining our goals in coordination with one another as an integrated team, and then using evidence-based best practices in order to move with a strength-based initiative at school sites. The transfers of learning comes through the coaching cycle, and we're seeing coaching cycles work across with principals and the green team, and our role as area superintendents is to mobilize the efforts and prioritize the direction at the school sites through the collective work with one another. We're really making connections and building coherence across the work together through coaching and collaboration, and building the capacity of both principals and teachers and one another. So, when I'm going through area walkthroughs, learning walks at the school site, I'm learning through the special ed expertise, through the English learner, support teacher expertise, through the Common Core standard, teacher expertise, through the ed tech integration expertise, and we're all learning together on how to support all learners in the classroom. And that's really the exciting work of building agency among all stakeholders, not just students, but building agency among teachers, principals, and myself, and all through the system. Principals are also learning on the side with teachers, and that's a really critical role because in order to move the work forward, they need to be learners as well and be at all aspects of the process. And we just know that more time and more practice together will build the work moving forward. I think that another key piece is that we're just focused on a strength-based initiative. So, the work has shifted to where we're not just trying to fill a need, but we're actually trying to build off strengths and replicate those strengths across the system, and that's the exciting work, and we're developing a cohesive vision and cohesive understanding and a common language throughout the process, so...
Thank you, Bruce. So, with that, Linda Truesdale will come and talk about how the organizational structure for counseling is designed for impact for students, which was part of the update. We know that there were shifts in counseling last year, we know that we heard lots of feedback about those shifts, were they going to work, how were they going to work, what was going to happen, what would we expect, and from elementary counseling to secondary counseling, they will describe the shifts that have taken place and how we're doing on those at this point.
Hello.
Becky.
One of the things that we want to talk to you a little bit about is how we have begun this reorganization process. We know that there was a lot of interest generated last year when shifts and reorganization began to happen, and I want to take you back a little bit further in time than just last year and the immediacy of that moment. And as we think about counseling and guidance services over time, we went through a period of time where there wasn't a lot of money within the district, and so, we had to think about our resources, and as I've now become much more involved with our school counseling department, it's been a department that our secondary has had really truly more resources because we're looking at getting our students to that graduation point. So, it makes sense, we have more students in our high schools, but when we look at the elementary model and we look at the supports that we have there, because of resources and budgets, our counselors were more stretched, and so, we're looking at this new opportunity in terms of the alignment and really rightsizing the supports that we can provide, because as we think about the work that we showcased our spotlight on, positive behavior supports, restorative practices, all the really good work with wellness centers, that also involves our counselors, you know, our school counselors, our head counselors. So, we need to be very strategic as we're layering in our investment, because this really is about our investment of connectivity to our students, to our other supports, to our area superintendents, and to that team approach. So, I just wanted to take us a little bit back in time as a place. For our, specific to our counseling and guidance department, they do, Melissa Janik's team oversees our EP10s, our suicide self-harm risk. At this point in the year, for the start of the school year, we've had 155 reports on our EP10s. That's a little high right now, so we're monitoring that data and thinking about, you know, why are we seeing that? Is there a pattern of, you know, student groups, you know, what's going on, elementary, middle, high school? I had the thought initially that it was more of a secondary concern, and it really isn't. And so, that helped me reframe my thinking in terms of, we really need to structure elementary a little bit differently as well. We've had 10 opportunities to have a dialogue around the crisis team, we've had 10 sites either get in contact that they've had a crisis response, and it's important that we're recognizing, we need to be able to, as a team, which is why our green teams are so important in our work with our area superintendents, we need to be able to mobilize very quickly and understand the culture of what's happening at the school level. Our elementary resource school counselors, we have four of them, and then we have a fifth one who does CalSoak, which is more of a secondary focus. They're focused around the areas, and here's where we got into a little tricky piece. Three of them are assigned, and they each have two areas to support. Well, many of our school counselors serve across areas, so they may be at a school in Area 1, 3, and 6. So, then we had to restructure, and Melissa did an awesome job in thinking about how do we then align support so that, you know, you don't have three different support people going out to a school, giving maybe different miscommunications. So, we're really thinking about this. In this particular area, the trend that we've begun to notice and that we're watching and paying attention to, again, is our TK1. We're starting to see more behavioral referrals, we're having some higher level of need of support, our behavior resources from special educations being called out. So, we're really starting to analyze that data as to why, what is the trend that we're seeing, what's causing it, what are those root causes? Was it our kinders hadn't had a TK experience, so this is their first opportunity in school? Or are there some other factors that we need to pay attention to? We're also beginning to think about, as they had shared in the other slide, that middle school transition, we're thinking about that elementary to middle school to ensure that we have supports and structures in place. And then the piece that I want to talk to you most about is the opportunity that we have really in terms of, and we will need your support as a board, is in the investment of really looking at, how do we imagine the possibilities of our elementary school counselors? It's critical that we have meaningful graduation as our outcome because that is our ultimate goal. But in order to get there, we know that so many of the things that we need, as we have strategies to focus on, you know, TK1, reading, we have so many areas that we know we have to focus on at that level. So, we're thinking about what does it take in that social, emotional area? So, we've begun the dialogue about what do we know that's out there? We're going to look at bringing in our school counselors, working with our area superintendents, where do they have counseling offices and departments at the elementary level that are thriving? I know Miller has an amazing counseling office, and they've done positive behavior supports, they handle, you know, their students are our military population. So, they've thought through a lot of the structures, but they also have a counselor more than one day a week. So, we're thinking about how do we make that into an investment strategy, working with our principals, working with our focus groups, and really designing something that will put some research-based practices into place, give our staff opportunities to learn and grow, and also have them support at the greater level, the work that we're doing in terms of positive behavior supports, restorative practices, and, you know, having them wrap their arms around that and continue to grow in those practices. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to...
I think what you just heard from Linda is a conversation district-wide around elementary counseling. What is happening at the elementary level, and is there a district-wide approach to that? And as Linda starts having conversations with Melissa and the elementary counselors, including all voices, just like we did with the secondary counselors, Franny will talk about that now, but we got input from the secondary counselors, what's needed, how can we expand? We're doing the same thing with the elementary counselors with the shifts in the way that we're providing our support. So, tell us about secondary counselors.
Good evening. So, I actually first like to start with the opportunity that Cheryl's team had at the very end of last school year in June, we called it the Listening Tour, to just gather everyone's needs in terms of the cluster, and one of the biggest outcomes that we received was the opportunity for professional development specifically around RA through G, and also the needs for differentiation between middle school and high school.
And that Listening Tour, she was specifically listening to the counselors?
Yes.
She held meetings with all of the counselors to say what is needed, what do we, and I remember her saying that some of the things that were coming out, was coming out from the Listening Tour was counselors were identifying things that they know need to change, but they can't as an individual counselor change it, they're more systemic issues, so Cheryl was able to pull out some of the key things that we need to now take on as a system, and where did we get those ideas? We didn't just make them up in cabinet, it came from that Listening Tour counselors on the ground, in the field, lists of information, we provided that in a recent board report, but that information then set the direction for what we're doing now to support students in counseling.
Which brings us to, really, our responsibility has really focused on the needs of each cluster, and our head counselors have been able to differentiate the needs, so between Scripps or Lincoln, depending on the needs, the resources have been provided in those efforts. Our collaboration has also been with supporting at the forefront, again, is working alongside many key personnel. For example, today, we had a great opportunity to have youth in transition at our PD with all our lead counselors, and they were able to provide us their resource in terms of the latest information of the law. What does it mean to be an AB 216 student? What does that look like? And also having open dialogue, hopefully Friday, with our special ed department and our secondary schools, and what does it mean to support a student who's maybe certificate-bound or diploma-bound? Can the student be a fifth-year student? And having those dialogues with easy access to all our departments, it's been a great and nurturing experience for all our counselors. I wanted to really highlight the building capacity model, which was something that we're really focused on. For those of you that got to join us, we had the Unlocking the Genius opportunity with Quacom, which was a great experience, and we've had great feedback from our counselors, and it was really about getting to know who you are as an individual and what potential you might have for the future. So, with that, we also really focused on Naviance and Power School and the systemic issues that we can support our counselors with. So, a perfect story for us, it has been, we always hear from our counselors, we're having issues with LoT, for example, and that not reflecting appropriately on the transcript, so we've been able to work with IT to make sure it's getting processed and getting easily labeled onto our transcripts.
That's exactly the kind of example, you had it on the tip of your tongue, that the counselors would say, if you guys could just fix this, this would help so many students. It was example after example, thank you for giving a specific one, and the event that she's referring to about unlocking the genius was earlier this week or last week, where we had every counselor, middle school and high school counselor and principal, district office staff, and community partners went through an exercise around unlocking our own genius, doing, it wasn't Myers-Briggs, it was Myers-Briggs inventory.
Strong inventory.
It was called the Strong Inventory, the Strength Inventory, that we know that when students leave our system knowing that there's a place in the world for them based on their strengths and their interests and their values, you heard Ed Hidalgo speak about it at the last LCAP update, that we just took the counseling team with the principals through that entire process.
And it was a wonderful opportunity. And again, we continue to do our Listening Tours and all the PDs that we host and bring back parking lot and see what things, as a systemic, we can approach and what things we can tackle and how we can support our clusters. And with that, I will turn it over to Sonia, Executive Director of Special Education.
Now, update on special education. Thank you. First of all, we just appreciate the opportunity to share with you what the Special Education Department is doing to improve overall outcomes for our students, and our main charge is really to guide, support our school teams in being able to create really those conditions that are needed for a meaningful and authentic learning environment. We truly believe that this could be accomplished through the IEP process and its implementation through quality-first teaching. We need to do a better job, we think, aligning our IEPs to that quality-first teaching, and that's kind of been our charge, and how are we going to get to that point? So, with the district's overall focus and change and having more of an instructional practice and the change in the academic standards, we knew we needed to rethink our department and our previous structure, which is why we kind of went through this full reorganization. Within that reorganization, we know we brought on new staff, so it was, in essence, we were building a new team. So, it was critical that everyone on that new team knew and owned and truly believed in our department's mission, vision, and our department goals, and therefore, our outcomes, which is what you have in front of you. So, these are just some very specific outcomes that we wanted to be very transparent as to what is it that we should start seeing in schools? What is it that our parents should be asking and seeing at their children's schools? So, just as an example, we actually laid this out by the different age groups, as you know, we serve birth to age 22, so our early childhood would be birth to age 5, our elementary to high school, and then a clear focus on graduation and adult transitions because that is a big goal for us. So, an example would be developing quality IEPs for authentic participation and learning. So, what does that mean? This is, through the IEP process is where we believe we can address attendance issues, chronic absenteeism, suspensions, expulsions, instructional needs, everything can fall really under that one bullet of providing quality IEPs. In addition to our work, we continue to collaborate with our San Diego Education Association and with our community advisory committees, because we learn from each other, we collaborate, we share with what is working, what is not working, so an example of that, I think later on today, will be this idea of the special ed study that will take a closer look at the special ed services that are currently happening, and hopefully through those findings, we'll be able to adjust and refine our services, and CAC is actually presenting to you tonight as well, so you'll be able to hear a little bit more about our partnership with them and how we're moving this work along. And now, Lorelei is going to share just a little bit and briefly, kind of, where our professional development plan and how, from our department, and how that is then taken into the school site.
So, for us to best be able to figure out how to serve our students and schools better, we ask ourselves a question. How can we best support schools in order to bring our vision, our mission, and our goals to life in order to improve overall outcomes for our students across the district? So, with that, our first answer was, we need to invest in partnerships with our schools. With that partnership, we can begin to address and... With that partnership, we can begin to address and problem-solve together and build capacity as we learn and grow together. The result of that partnership will be systemic, as we calibrate and, in our knowledge and our skills, so that we can work alongside our school teams to realize the goals for our students. You have in front of you our professional development plan. We're working from the inside out, and I'm going to very briefly describe that plan, because our professional development plan is essentially designed around the continuous instructional cycle for adult learning. And we wanted to really figure out, what is our brand? And what does that mean for students and for schools and for services for students with disabilities? So we're achieving that primarily through three team retreats this school year. From there, where, again, you've heard other folks speak about the walkthrough study, we're doing that within our own department to sharpen our team's lens on how to lead instructional improvement for students with disabilities. Additionally, we're going to be conducting case studies, action research, and lesson studies, and that will help us to serve our goal to connect general education and special education, so that the experience for our students is unified across our school district. Lastly, we'll rely on professional development, excuse me, professional reading, so that we can implement research-based strategies for best practice. We understand that school sites, school leaders and their teams have various experiences, needs, as well as expertise. So we wanted to customize, what does that service model look like for each school, so that we can support those schools both instructionally and operationally, so that our schools, our students can achieve at higher levels. Some examples of what those supports would look like at a school level, just to name a few, we would develop quality IEPs alongside those school teams. We would customize the PD around the school and the students' needs. We would support the actual scheduling for the students, the programming, and the development of the service model, aligned with the students attending those schools. We would, alongside teams, focus in on instructional planning with those appropriate supports. We'd rely on data analysis and then develop together action plans. Of course, we would need to problem-solve specific student needs at each of the schools. We look forward to sharing student progress with you as the year progresses. I'll share, I'll turn it over to Vernon next, as he works, as he shares his work in leading with youth advocacy.
A key part to what they just presented was a study that we committed to with SDEA and CAC around getting real feedback from teachers in the classrooms about what's working, what's not working, the walkthrough studies, the articles that we read, the research, and the, you can do book clubs, you can do retreats, you can do walkthrough studies, you can do action research, but we also know teachers have really critical feedback for us, and that's part of the study that we'll be engaging in, so that we're changing the system. The major changes that Sonia made going forward in this year is shifting the team to make sure she has administrators that have instructional practice in mind, and those administrators are able to be part of the green team and support changing instruction in the classroom. Youth advocacy.
Thank you. Youth advocacy has a direct role in the achievement of our students, particularly our students called out in our quarterly report. We work with our constituency groups, primarily with our African-American and Latino students. With regards to our African-American students, the Blueprint Task Force is in partnership with the Association of African-American Educators, is one of our primary ways to get in touch with that community. And this year, we're implementing a new strategy with the group around four implementation teams, academic achievement, cultural proficiency, parent and community engagement, and student celebrations and concerns. And really, the highlight here is that there are teams of folks that are gathering around some of these strategies that can really be the difference-makers for students. For example, in the African-American, excuse me, in the academic achievement group for African-American and African students, I've got four principals at four elementary schools that are really working very closely and monitoring their DRA scores and doing some qualitative research with their students and their parents and families to find out, where are the achievement pieces? Are students beginning the school year at the elementary school with a lower DRA score? Do, that's a direct reading assessment score, do we need to implement some strategies, some key strategies as the year progresses? But keeping a very key focus on that, and that group will be reporting back to the larger group in January. Just around parent and community engagement, you heard already the design thinking group that talked about the work at the Crawford Cluster. Well, on December, November 16th, I should say, next Monday, we're going to have a design thinking experience in the Blueprint Task Force Group, where we're going to talk about how can we engage our African-American parents and community members to really gather around the students, particularly in the Lincoln Cluster, but we're going to, we want to expand what we learned there district-wide. And our Latino Advisory Committee-
Just so, not to interrupt, but the Office of Youth Advocacy, you know, when we opened that up, specifically this update was on African-American students, but his office addresses all of our student groups and from area, so he's going to just throw in a couple.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I know, I really couldn't help it, but particularly for Latino Advisory, we're really focusing on, if you look at that middle bullet around parent engagement around the LCAP, that was our last, that was our last Latino Advisory Committee meeting last week. And in that meeting, we really talked about, how can we demystify the LCAP at the site level, where we work in supporting with principals, going through the six LCAP goals and really explaining to parents in a variety of languages and a variety of modalities, what our efforts are in approving achievement and reaching meaningful graduation, and how that can really look over time. It's not a one-time, one-shot, open-house experience, but it's a graduate experience. That was the major topic of discussion in the Latino Advisory Committee, so it's informing us on how we can engage our parents. There's also that piece on cultural proficiency, you'll see that it exists in both, but you'll be getting a board report on that next, next week, next Tuesday.
Word workshop.
Word workshop, thank you. And I couldn't resist, and I couldn't leave this out, but there are some other strategies that youth advocacy is wholeheartedly engaged in, including LGBTQ supports. And I'd like to report just very quickly, because I know trustee advisor called this out, but we're on Thursday in the process of conducting interviews for a resource teacher for the position, to ensure that the, LGBTQ spans all of our racial identities, cultural identities, socioeconomic levels, all of our student groups, and so it is a primary feature for youth advocacy. And in the work of all this, of all of our departments are really focused on all the student achievement pieces. You see ethnic studies there, you see diversity in staffing, student mentoring, and other efforts that we are undergoing to really make a difference and move the needle on academic achievement for our students. I'm going to turn it over now to Nacephas and Ms. Liskowski regarding the Office of Language Acquisition and their work with English learners.
And as you know, we had significant shifts in our supports for English learners with our ELSTs, and one of the charges that we put forth was a district overall vision around supporting English learners. And the charge that we gave to our area superintendents in realigning the work to support English learners, we said that we wanted to specifically focus on CELT, on reclassification, on high-functioning ELACS at every school, on strong good-first teaching in the classroom, tier-one instruction, and on response to intervention. So this particular quarterly update, all five of those areas are important, but specifically, we want to tell you how's it going with CELT, and how's it going with reclassification, the ELACS, and the majority of the presentation is on Goal Four within the realignment of the work of the ELSTs, is on good-first teaching, tier-one instruction. What are we doing with that? How are we making sure that tier-one instruction, every teacher becomes skilled and skilled enough to meet the needs of English learners? And it's not just knowledge that's owned by a small elite group. How are we getting that into each and every classroom and supporting teachers for tier-one instruction or good-first teaching? So those five-goal areas, CELT, reclassification, high-functioning ELACS, tier-one instruction, and RTI would be the frame for the update, the quarterly update. And tonight, you'll hear specifically how we're doing on CELT, ELACS, and the bulk of the presentation on tier-one instruction.
And I thank the board for this opportunity to come before you and highlight the work of our ELSTs. I know there was some concerns and questions at the end of the year as how that we would utilize their expertise with this new model, so I appreciate the time to share. In regards to CELT, I'd like to report that CELT testing was complete, and all of our ELSTs, along with principals and EL coordinators and even the teachers, helped in advocating to get the CELT testing done, and there was only a handful of testing irregularities reported. And according to Erin Gordon, 70 of our district schools did an exceptional job of turning in their materials. All the materials were turned in on time, but 70 district schools did turn in the materials in an exceptional, exceptional manner. So that means that all of the forms were filled out correctly, student booklets were completed with the little bubbles correctly penciled in, and that all the required fields were intact. And then to update you on ELAC, district trainings began October 15th to 27th, and there was an additional date added for November 12th to accommodate principal schedules and the schedules that people who couldn't make those two, those two dates that had-
It was significant, because we wanted to make sure that principals were engaged in site ELACS, that it wasn't something that was delegated to the, to an ELST. And so we trained principals, and we expect principals to be present, involved, engaged in leading site-level ELACS at every school.
Yes, and we know that there is that transition going on for, especially for principals who had an ELST at their school site. Now they're going to have to take on, not have to take on, now they have the opportunity to engage with their parents in a different way, and I think that that's really important. As we've heard tonight, the parents really would love to have their voice heard, and really, forming those relationships with your principal is really important and crucial. So the area superintendents were instrumental in helping us distribute an information guide created by the Office of Language Acquisition to all principals to support the implementation, continuation, or creation of a site-based ELAC. The ELSTs have been available to kind of shepherd the way, and there's one ELST that I talked to who talked about actually handing the torch over to her principal, and she's like, I handed him the binder and talked to him about the different agendas and ways that he could work to engage the principal, so I was really happy to hear that. There's also a Wiki space created that the ELSTs can access, and if principals would love access to, they can guide them to sign up for that Wiki page, where it has model agendas, the different legal tasks that they can use, and also forming ELACS and memberships, and different opportunities for them to utilize already some supports that are there. So there's an online resource available.
Do you have a couple of schools that you'd like to have a view of as well?
I would say there's been some cluster models. There's been school sites that have, so the one school where the ELST contacted, we were talking, and she was saying that she had this, you know, ritualistic-
Passing of the binder.
Passing of the binder. And I was like, oh my goodness, how amazing was that, that there was this actual conversation and a guiding, and, you know, I guess that collaborative effort that you're not alone, that we're here as a team, I'm still here to support you, but I trust over the years that we've been working together, you can take this on, so.
You don't want to say what school that was.
Oh, I can name the school. That was at Marshall Elementary. And then I know that the Point Loma has been doing cluster models and talking about that, so they have their own way of providing site-based support as well as cluster conversations for the pathway. So it's different, it's growing, and we're loving the fact that it can be tailored to the, to the different areas, and the area superintendents have been amazing at helping us work in collaboration to get this new model out and running.
That's significant, that it's the area superintendent working with them. It's not, it's not just all office trying to tell principals to do things, it's through the green team and through area superintendents leading and having the expectation and the accountability that goes with it.
Yes.
And the support that goes with it.
And the big support. So if you notice the slide before you, I'd like to just share that you've heard about building capacity. This slide represents that continuous cycle of learning, and it's a coaching model. In a visual representation, we had our ELSTs go through a long, like, six-page document about the coaching cycle and what that looks like at the school site as you're engaging in these walkthroughs. And so this visual representation, you can see, highlights those different things, like relationships and just the cycle of learning. So I love that that's there, and it was created by our ELSTs, that's one version, a PD we did last week to introduce them to this model, and it's been supported. I want to say that there's been a variety of ways that ELSTs have helped in supporting the work. They've gone on walkthroughs with the area superintendents and the green team. I also want to mention that the green teams also meet together with the area superintendents and discuss the plan of action and who they are and that collective single vision, so that is happening on different levels, multiple levels. So it's not just that they're hearing it from us, or they're hearing it at the school site, it's actually happening in each cluster in each area. The ELSTs have also been working on school site PDs around the Lucy Cockens Writer's Workshop, also the ELA standards, doing some supports with that, as well as something that I'd like to highlight is doing case study work during Writer's Workshop. So one of the stories I bring before you is Susan Gutierrez, who's an ELST in Area Five, and along with her sister ELSTs, there's three of them who work together right now. They're kind of working as a team to gain understanding of this new model, and so nobody's working alone and feeling like they're out on a limb. So they're working together, and they had gone through a walkthrough at Garfield Elementary, and along with the principal and the grade-four teachers in this PLC model, decided that what they really needed to work on was this conferencing, the conferring with students, and that usually takes, it's like a four-part design in that conversation. So there's the research, the teaching, and then you decide, the research, the decision of what you're going to teach, your teaching, and then the student links, and the student's supposed to really, I guess, lead that conversation, so it's how do you coach this child to lead in that conversation about their writing? And so they did a public conference, and Susan led that conference. The student Sebastian was a fourth grader who's an EL learner. They brought him before this team in a fishbowl model, where Susan sat side by side with his student and worked through his, his writing. He shared what he was working on as a student and as a writer. The idea is to open this up, to not focus on just this one inner, one little moment, but as a writer, what are you working on? So we're not coaching to the writing, we're coaching to the writer, and how they can grow their understanding in writing. So once they had that initial conversation, he was sent back to class, and as a team, they decided what those next steps would be. They decided on what that would be. Susan taught into that, and then had the student be able to articulate his writing plan and set some goals. The idea was for his link, he went right back to the classroom, and during the share-out, he shared what he had learned during that conference. The next day, when Susan checked in with that student, he was able to articulate his plan of action and how that helped him grow as a writer. So with that, I'm going to-
The most important word on that slide is agency.
That is exactly what we want to grow with all of our stakeholders, with all of our green teams, with our students, principals, teachers, and support staff. So it is one of a-
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I will be highlighting a few, actually a small portion of the district-wide data with the focus, of course, on English learners. So this first slide highlights five major trends that emerged from our, from our district data. So based on the data, we know that reclassification rates continue to improve slightly each year. We also know that students continue to improve at all proficiency levels on the CELT, except for the intermediate level. We also know that clusters with the highest enrollment of English learners are Hoover, San Diego, and Lincoln. Fifty-five percent of our long-term English learners are at the intermediate and early advanced levels, and 61% of those long-term English learners are students with disabilities. So as Teresa mentioned earlier, our goal is to start addressing these areas of needs, is to train our English learners, support teachers, to help improve tier-one instruction, and that's through coaching and lesson design to build capacity at the site level. The second slide gives you a picture of the number of current and former English learners, students by proficiency level and by cluster, and you can clearly see that the greatest needs lie at the intermediate levels, or proficiency levels. This next slide-
That went too far.
No. No. Oh, yeah. Okay, this next slide highlights the English language proficiency and redesignation trends with, as you can see, the greater gains start at the seventh year of enrollment. And finally, this last slide highlights the upward trend in the reclassification over the last three years that we have seen.
We think that the best way to impact the reclassification rate is Tier One instruction. We are also engaging at the state level about the criteria for reclassification, knowing that we want to make sure the criteria is one that is accurate. We've seen some trends and patterns, and there's an opportunity right now to look at the reclassification requirements by the state of California now that there's no longer the CST. That used to be one of the components. We're working with, wanting to put our advocacy with Lauren Gonzalez. I know is interested in reclassification rules at the state level. We see the trend, we saw getting a slight increase. We know that we're going to increase reclassification rates with Tier One instruction, bottom line.
Yeah, and I just want to point out those, you know, those rates, because sometimes it's hard to, that's a 10% rate from 14, 15 over the prior year. And then going back to 12, 13, that's a 16% increase in those rates. So that's, you know, that's significant improvement. Do we have numbers, by the way, on the total number of long-term English learners? Because we called that out a couple of years ago.
No, I mean, we can get that for you for our next year. Absolutely. You want to know? Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Because the previous number was around 6,000, right?
6,000, yeah. We want to keep tracking that.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think Bruce is going to summarize the last slide.
All right, so I want to ground us in our essential question again.
Not testing one.
There, Tom.
All right. I want to ground us again in our essential question around how our current organizational structures are improving learning outcomes for each and every student. So we're building a cohesive team, and we know that the old practice of working in silos, having expertise, only lie within a particular department or with a particular individual is not how we're going to build capacity across our system. And through a coordinated effort and a cycle of continuous improvement, we know that we need to recognize the expertise at every level in the system, and that that expertise needs to be shared and known across the system. So through a coordinated effort, that expertise is being shared, and we're cross-pollinating ideas, and we're developing a collective intelligence and wisdom across the departments, and we're developing a shared singular vision on how to build capacity. We're also doing this through an adoption of a common approach. You heard about the coaching cycles today, and all the departments are also engaging in a book study around the art of coaching as well, developing a common language, and looking at how we lift up and replicate strengths across a school. So when we go on learning walks together, we are learning together on what to look for. We're sharpening our lens. We're lifting up the strengths. We're asking wonderings with the principal. We're talking about just-right-next steps on how to differentiate, engage all learners. And then we're determining patterns across a school to how to then professionally develop those capacity builders identified at the school site, not just the principal, but the resource teachers and department heads and teacher leads and other identified individuals on the site. So when the green team, area support, leaves the site, the work continues on the site, and the principal learns on the side with them as well and helps lead that work as well. And then we're just coordinating that effort, and that's the area superintendent's work, is to help mobilize and integrate that work and keep that work moving forward. So that's our collective work, and we really believe that it's not just about the essence of each department's work, but it's really about the strengths of each department. We're looking through that appreciative lens of the strengths that everyone brings and developing that collective expertise together.
So what you see is that the work that we've undertaken is not simple, and there are not silver bullets. A lot of people have quick fixes, easy answers. If you just do this to every school, then all of a sudden African-American students, we find students with disabilities, will soar, and English learners. The answers are not, we already said we already have the answers. It's a matter of, do we have a systemic approach to do it in every single school, every single day, for each and every child, so each and every adult has access to the learning they need to give the students the learning they need? The solutions are, they don't happen here at the DIES. They happen with this coordinated team. And so what we wanted you to see today is how are we working together as a team to deliver a complex, in a complex system, without simple answers. And yet, it's quite elegant in its design, and it's hard for people to understand specifically how that's organized. You see green team, and they talked about the pink team and the green team, but how is that actually making a difference at sites? Tonight was the first of the quarterly updates. I can hear, I think the stories are probably most meaningful to you, the specific stories. I heard, you know, Teresa told the story of the one student. At our next quarterly update, we can make sure that we're bringing more stories and examples from the field, from teachers' experiences. Counselors have stories around how this is impacting their work and their ability to deliver service. So it's a beginning of helping people understand how we're designing complex work.
I do have a question. When you're talking about Tier One instruction and improving, you know, the instructional strategies with the training and the supports and all, and the integration of, you know, all the efforts that you've mentioned here tonight for these special populations. I know that SDEA, I think, has a program for veteran teachers where they come back and they are mentors to teachers that need additional, or just teachers that want support in some way. I don't know the particulars on how that works. But I just wondered if you had thought about, or something that we would consider to help support the efforts are, some of the veteran teachers that have actually retired, that have had great success with our students, they're not done yet. They're not, they're, you know, they've retired. But, you know, once a teacher, always a teacher. And you take all that wisdom. You don't want to just take that wisdom and just, and not give it back, and not share, and not pour into, you know, our teaching force. So I wonder if there's an opportunity to bring some of those veteran teachers back or invest in that so that they can work alongside or be in the classroom with teachers. Because I know that, especially new teachers, right, they take in all of this training and support, and then they have to apply it. And if they had someone who was right there alongside them where they could trust and practice and would give them that feedback that they need, and then help them to develop plans outside the class, and just, I think that that would be an invaluable resource and support for our teachers. You know, because it's one thing to take all this training, and then to have someone there to kind of observe and give you feedback, I think, would make all the difference. So I just wondered if you had thought of that, or if you're already doing a little bit of that, and, yeah.
I think that's what this model highlights. So when I talk about a PLC, I don't know if I mentioned a PLC, a professional learning community. That's where the principal and a grade level and a support teacher usually comes in. And that would be something coordinated through the area superintendents after a walkthrough. And you would decide on what are those, what are the capacity builders or this high leverage? Or it might not even be the capacity builder in the team. It's like, who's eager, who's ready to take this work on? And then how do we support them with that feedback and this idea of continuous learning? There's a lot of collegial work and conversation that happens. And I think that that's, you're right. You have the veteran teacher and the new teacher all sitting at the table, as well as the, you know, the teacher who's in the middle who's been teaching for five to 10 years. And they're all sharing and wrapping their arms around a classroom, an approach, and working together. And then the principal can go on after that and give feedback and support, or release teachers to do that again, to walk through each other's room and give each other feedback. So this is a collaborative model. And you're right, there is wisdom in every, each and every one of us. And I think our veteran teachers, as well as our new teachers, come equipped with similar wisdom and opportunity from their new learning. So yes, we have, but not that particular way you described it. But I think it is embedded in our PLCs.
Right. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Because I do understand the PLCs very well. It's just that, I guess I was kind of thinking about so many teachers retired. You know, we just had the SERP, and so many teachers retired, veteran teachers that had contributed so much to this district, and what percentage of them, you know, come back and are able to give back in that way? And are we utilizing them, or is there opportunity to utilize them? And does that, you know, make sense in how we might be able to incorporate that?
It's not a systemic-specific strategy that we're currently using.
Right, sure.
That doesn't mean that we don't have retired teachers coming back and doing work. Some of them were involved in CELT testing, I know that. But systemically, I understand what your point is, and it's something, a suggestion around being more systemic about it.
Thank you. It's so much, I mean, it's evident that so much work went into this. And you were very systematic and thoughtful with data at the core, you know, with fidelity, making sure that you have the right strategy and careful approach so that it would be long-lasting. I see what you've put together, and it is very impressive. And so, again, the challenge is to be able to take this to scale. And of course, everyone's, you know, impatient, but I see the down payments, and I see, just with the data alone, we've seen some key shifts, right? So we know that it's working. So thank you very, very much for your leadership, you know, on this, and Superintendent Martin.
Thank you, big team.
Okay, so for...
Careful what you wish for.
So for the board consent agenda, can I have one motion for F1 through F5?
Move.
Okay. Can we please vote?
You over there.
And then for operational matters, it's G1 is information only. So we're going to have, are we going to have our Superintendent Martin?
Sonia's going to stay, but this is the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education Semiannual Report. And Mina, thank you for waiting so long. You got to hear a lot about instruction and specifically update on students with disabilities. And Sonia is not staying up here to respond, but I just want her to be here to listen to the report. I know she worked with you, Sonia and Lorelei both. Sorry, Lorelei, come back up as well. But it's not meant to dialogue. It's just, Mina is delivering the semiannual report to the board from the CAC on special education.
Good evening. My name is Mina Kern. I am Chair of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. This is my first semiannual report for the school year. Go over the CAC process a little bit. Parents raise concerns and questions during one of our meetings. District staff is there on site to deal with more acute problems. The CAC then morphs that original question or concern into a broader issue and continues that discussion with the Special Education Department. And then that conversation now continues with this board and superintendent with a focus on the district as a whole rather than on specific school sites. So these are a few of the areas that I'm going to discuss this evening.
I'm just going to highlight the fact that your process and the way that you do that, it's very helpful to us, the way that you take feedback from individuals and turn it into district-wide issues so that we can then address it in a systemic way. And I really appreciate your leadership on that. I know I'm not supposed to be talking back and forth, but that slide on process isn't just a form, there's meaning behind that and the way you can take an individual concern and turn it into something bigger. I know that takes a lot of work on your part to really think that through, and that helps us as staff be able to better serve.
Thank you. Well, we just want to honor that, just because one parent comes to our meetings and says something, it usually indicates that it's happening at other sites as well. So first up is audit of the Special Education Support and Services. This is actually an agenda item for this board to vote on I-6 later on. So this stems from contract negotiations with SDEA and the district. So the CAC Executive Board has met with Sonia Picos and, I'm sorry, Lorelei Olson, and to go over the two proposals that were submitted by Hanover and WestEd. And we have been asked to participate through focus groups, working on the who and how for those focus groups, and then also the interview and survey questions for parents, so developing those concepts. And then I have also offered to give the first half of our January CAC General Meeting as a source of information gathering for WestEd, which is the company that, the proposal that is being put forth this evening for approval. So then carrying on, in my May report, I had requested that there also be an audit of the TRACE program. And we, and the CAC has been in discussions with Special Education Department. And I wanted to highlight some of the data points that we have requested. So it's not an audit in just the financial sense, but also in services sense as well, just like the previous audit I was discussing. So we asked for total budget of TRACE, total dollars spent at high school level for credentialed and classified employees, number and percent of students in TRACE who are registered with the Department of Rehab that have competitive employment, who are placed in day programs with a regional center and once they age out, number and percent of students in TRACE who have earned a high school Option Two diploma when they exit from their IDEA obligation, TRACE students who are still receiving related services, who are receiving community services. This is all over a three-year time span. We've asked for all that data for three years back. And then workability, the budget, number of staff, number of students served district-wide and at specific school sites. And then how many students have been offered employment at their job signs once workability is over. And that's really the big goal of TRACE and workability is employment once you are finished. So there's been a breakdown because it hasn't happened. So we are trying to figure out where is this breakdown occurring? That's why we're asking for these specific data points. And then how can we improve the program to increase the benefit to the student? So we just made this request a couple of weeks ago. So I'm just reporting that we have made movement. Transition plans. So the district average for compliance for Indicator 13 is 26% as of May. This is individual transition plans must occur by age 16. Indicator 13 is a federal guideline, a little checklist of, yes, this happened, no, it didn't. So the Special Education Department is doing monthly reviews of high school IEPs and also ITPs with a 30-day fix for corrective action. So they go in, review it, and give the school site 30 days to fix what needs to be done. And they're not just working on quantity of checking off the boxes, but also quality by meaningful goals, which is person-driven planning. And I mean, person-driven planning by actually sitting with the student, figuring out what is the student good at, what does the student have interest in, and basing their ITP off of that, which is really critical, because then it's more meaningful for the student. Side-by-side coaching, so special education site administrators and project resource teachers work with school staff on implementing these, coming up with these ITPs and implementing them. And then linked ties between graduation requirements, diploma options, courses of study, and transition plans. So professional development with head counselors regarding the transcript audit. So not just reviewing the master schedule, but also making sure that students are in the classes that will get them towards a diploma or what their course of study will be after they're aged out.
Can I just say, Indicator 13's not 0%.
It needs to be 0.
Yes. I'm not saying that 26% is the thing, like, it's not the best.
There were several times it was 0.
I know, believe me. I know. And the goal is to double it by the end of the school year. And there's very specific things that we're doing to get that indicator to move. We brought that into instructional cabinet. This is a... This is an example of the green team and the instructional cabinet being able to have Sonia and Lorelei be part of that team, speak directly to area superintendents, directly from CAC, and feedback in the field to get things to happen at the schools where it doesn't, you can't have a department doing something to a school, it has to be in that coordinated team. So, we know we have work to do, but it's not 0%.
Right.
Is this compliance percent related to that new program we were gonna implement so we were getting away from paper processes, sort of?
Oh, the new IEP software system.
Yeah. Is this improvement a result of the new IEP software?
No, because we haven't implemented the new system. So, actually, with the new system, it should even get even better.
So, this is without it?
This is without it. This is like department.
So, I'm hopeful for the future.
Absolutely, so are we. Yeah, the reason why it improved is bullet number two there, that the team is having ongoing monthly reviews of the IEPs and the ITPs, and there's a 30-day fix for corrective action. We made that a monthly process.
Yeah. So, in terms of the, in terms of the software for the new IEP program, you know, we've talked about this two years ago. And then, we actually acted, I think, I don't know exactly the timeline. I'll get fact-checked if I say anything. So, sometime in the distant past, and so, I was under the impression that we'd be implementing it this year, like, this September, but that hasn't happened yet. So, what are we looking at in terms of implementation of the new software for IEPs?
We've had, unfortunately, a few setbacks. Nevertheless, we're now on, right on track, but we did have to push the timeline because the developers actually were developing for us what they are considering the Holy Grail. I guess we asked for a lot because we wanna make sure that we have a system that's actually going to work for students and not get in the way of students. So, we rather kinda go slow and take our time to get it right. So, the pilot is expected to be in the spring and then full district-wide implementation in the fall.
So, then, we've worked with them to refine it so that it will meet our compliance needs and the needs of our kids.
Absolutely.
So, then, they'll take that refined version and sell it up and down the state. Do we get a percent of that cut of sales?
That's what we were asking. Mina, back to your report.
Okay, sir. I'm just, doesn't hurt to ask.
I did, actually, on my last slide, report out on the IEP software. So, my one point I wanted to make about this slide was, this all came from the 2011 Dr. David Naranjo report when the district was at 0%. So, it's taken four years for us to get here, and that's a long time. So, I'm excited that the goal is to double the percentage by the end of the year, but at the same time, that's still only 52% on, just on indicator 13. So, there's still a lot of work to be done. But I did wanna acknowledge that at least there's movement forward. Oops. I go back. Okay.
Don't skip the bullying.
I know, I'm not skipping bullying. I keep going, I know, I keep going back and forth, I'm sorry. Okay, so bullying is a very hot topic with all student groups. So, how the quarterly report centered mostly on African-American and Latino student groups, I would like to make a plug for the student, students with disabilities to report it out on the next time. Then, adult on student bullying is, and when I say very prevalent, if we, the CAC hears reports of this several times a year. And a lot of times, it happens to our nonverbal or limitedly verbal students, so they are not able to express for themselves what is going on. It's witnessed by another adult and it's reported, or it's witnessed by a parent. And part of the frustration, the issue, is a lack of a definitive process with a specific timeline. Parents are, file a complaint and all they are told are, okay, we'll conduct an investigation. If they hear that an investigation has been conducted, then they're told, I'm sorry, it's all confidential, that's all you know is that an investigation was conducted. So, I'm urging the board to respond to transparency over, value it over confidentiality. I understand there are some issues, but it is a significant problem. And it really impacts families and students. And when you talk about students not showing up to school, that's a big reason why. Professional development, so put mandatory in question, Martin, 'cause when I say mandatory, I always get the skunk eye of, well, you can't make someone do something. And that's true. I can't make, not me, you cannot make someone go, you cannot make them learn, but you can embed it into what's already being taught, part of the PD, which I know Sonia's team is working on and they have a lot of information, but it must be embedded so that it's not a separate, it's already there included. You can't get away from it because it's everywhere. Just as, like, during Principals Congress, if they all could read, I'm not necessarily plugging this book, but it's A Principal's Guide to Special Education, and the first chapter is on special education law, which is so important that everyone, staff, especially Principals, because we know it starts with the principal and works its way down, even area superintendents, to have a cursory understanding of what special education law is. If you go on special education law and implement the IEPs that the team spent the time to put together, there would be a lot more student improvement. It's a little slide, but it's so very important.
We agree.
Because if you look at the pink donut, the student is the center and then the IEP is the first circle, and then the IDEA, social education law, is the outside circle. It's like layers.
There's the pink donut going in.
I know. Okay. I paid attention.
Mina, you're doing great. We're so proud of you.
So, recognition, this is that our executive director and director of Special Education Program Managers and other staffs do attend our meetings and give parents an opportunity to interact one-on-one. It's so important to have face time. And when, we do have forms for parents to fill out so that the district is able to contact the parent directly. And the CAC has copied on that, and then, the district also keeps a database and records when the response was and what it was, so that we can have follow-up. And then, myself and the other district advisory leaders, Gate, Delac, DAC, and, that's it? Yes. We meet with Superintendent Martin on a regular basis. So, it's like, I don't know if anybody's read the book Team of Teams by retired General Stanley McCarthy. It's about not, it's the breaking down the silos of, it's not just this group, this group, this group, but that we all are similar and we have, it's a nice dialogue and I'm able to be all the same. I'm totally sorry.
You're doing great.
I'm sorry. Okay, so, I'm gonna go on. So, monitoring, we were talking about the new IEP software, the CAC participation. We still want to do the user acceptance training when it happens, but now that's been pushed back to the fall of 2016. And then, the other, I've had this discussion with Superintendent Martin about SES tutoring, which is, we've had reports of students being, students with IEPs, first, they're being requested to submit those IEPs along with their SES tutoring applications, and then, they're being denied because, potentially, they're receiving specialized academic instruction in either math or English, and that's being seen as additional help anyway, so they don't deserve the tutoring. So, we're just calling that out right now. Okay, let's see, did I talk super fast? I'm sorry.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mina.
Have any questions?
I have a question. Your time. Good job. Thank you. Thank you, Sonia and Lorelei.
Pastor, I'll move items T3 and T4.
Okay, perfect. Please vote. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. No, can we clear that and vote again, please? Okay. There we go. And that passes unanimously. And then, moving on to H1.
Oh, thank you, President Pastor. I'm gonna invite up Midori Wong. And this is the, our annual report to you on the multi-year transition plan to implement the common traditional calendar as we transition year-round schools to traditional, and the outreach that we've done and where we are in that process. And because of timing, it's really important that we start this process early in the year.
I'll move item H1.
And what you have before you, oh, sorry, is that it? And what you have before you is the plan going forward for the 2016-17 Kearney Cluster, Lincoln Cluster, Moore's Cluster, and then, 17-18 Crawford and Hoover with San Diego Cluster in 18-19. And there were several objectives that we were needing to accomplish all at the same time. And you know, as you know, we looked at cluster alignment, making sure that we had continuous pathways. If a middle school was on one schedule, for example, in Kearney, one middle school was on one schedule and another one was on a different schedule. It's very difficult to do our neighborhood schools' approach when you have a cluster that's not aligned. We also looked at schools with high military populations, and we looked at, for example, the Lincoln steam pathway, making sure we're in alignment there. So, Midori, I don't know if you have specific things you want to address or hear for questions? Okay. The item has all of the detail and outreach that she put together in reaching out. We had some success stories in the first-year implementation back at the schools that already made the transition. For example, the Jeribek principal reported that there was an increased enrollment that could be due to schools, to school returning to the same schedule as the middle school and high school in that cluster. And it's difficult to completely find the data to validate that, but that was anecdotal from the principal there. Principals were commenting to us that the consistent, ongoing communication and the informational materials that we provided were very helpful. We have one year under our belt of transitioning, so now, we're going into second year. We also heard back that it was helpful that the following year's school calendar was finalized early so that families would know how to plan for vacations and travel. That's why we're bringing this to you now, so people know when there's a transition like that, they can plan for it. We heard that there was great support from our custodial staff to make sure the schools were cleaned and ready for the new school year over a shorter summer break. Our instructional facilities and planning department said that in 2014-15, there were around 8,600 students attending year-round schools that would convert to 2015-16, approximately 2,000 of those students who lived at the same addresses as those 8,000 students who were on traditional calendars or attending charter schools, which may have traditional or other calendar types. We were able to estimate that the transition may have assisted these families who were previously on two different calendars. Getting families on one calendar was really helpful. So, military liaisons also told us that, they gave us anecdotal comments that the military families moving into the district appreciated knowing schools that were previously on year-round calendar are now on traditional, and they said this makes it a lot easier. We heard that over and over again. We're gonna continue to work with our Operations Division, Food Services, Special Education, Leadership and Learning to make sure when we make a transition like this, it goes smoothly from many different perspectives.
So, do I have a motion to move? Go ahead.
Sir.
Oh, right, okay.
I wanna thank Midori and her staff and Superintendent Martin on listening to the concerns of the parents. We've seen phenomenal difference in the families in Tierra Santa and Scripps Ranch and other communities where no longer do they have, you know, their younger children on one schedule, calendar, and the kids in high school on a different. And it's just, it's so healing to the families that have kids at different ages in their cluster. And I'm really, really happy that we have the resources to do this at this point in time. I know when I first got on the board, I brought it up again and again and again, and it was, you know, we were having to just keep the doors open to the schools then. And so, now, we're at a point where we can make these kinds of decisions for our students. And I look forward to, you know, we've talked about the potential cost savings to the district. We've never been able to kind of identify what that monetary number would be. So, after we are all on the same calendar, I think that that would be a real interesting opportunity to look at the savings from the transition and then putting that back into the summer programs for that summer learning loss prevention.
We do have a little bit, and I don't think it was actually in the item, but staff does know that the board's interested in tracking the cost savings. So, staff has informed me that we were not positive if there will be one, but PPO is tracking, the energy and utility team from PPO is going to look at each school's utility costs every month to see if there's something. Because the first group of schools that moved to traditional calendar took effect in 2015-16, we don't even have a full year's worth of data yet, but we are tracking that monthly 'cause we did note the board's interest in that. And we'll be also tracking any potential cost savings or boost to ADA through this school year realignment. Maybe we can measure attendance in the summer months and any impact to school enrollment. So, we could see if there's any cost savings in that right way.
I'd just like to underscore, I'm really thanking you for your leadership, Midori, in all this. And our students and families get to benefit big time. And I know from so many families who've said that I have a student here, here, and different schedules, and to be, you know, better aligned, it just really helps with attendance and everything that we're trying to achieve inconsistency. So, thanks once again. Thank you.
The total cost of the item in a four-year plan was $12 million. And so, we tried to, our attempt is to break it into four years, and it's about $3 million each year. And we, staff continues to contemplate this in our first interim report, but we're needing to take action tonight so we can move ahead with the plans so that it's timely, informing the families, getting staffs involved. So, that's why it's coming forward tonight as the second phase of the plan.
Please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so, can I have a motion for?
I'll move item H4 to public hearing.
Okay. Open the hearing and, huh? None? Okay. If there's no discussion, can we please vote? Okay.
I'll move item H5 to public hearing.
Open the hearing and, okay. No speakers. Can we please vote? Passes unanimously. Okay.
I'll second.
Before we move the consent agenda, I wanna report on I-12. So, I don't know if I'm allowed to pull that when I have something to say about it?
We can say anything.
Okay. I-12 is a resolution approving the official statement for issuance of our general obligation bonds, including the new Prop S bonds. And I-13 is the resolution approving the official statement for issuance of Prop Z general obligation bonds. And I just wanted to highlight, as this goes forward tonight, that San Diego Unified School District's management team is very pleased to share with the board and the public tonight our very successful rating outcomes that we were made aware of last week. The district received positive news and very high ratings from all three rating agencies. Moody's Investors Services upgraded their rating of San Diego Unified from AA3 to AA2. Fitch Ratings assigned the AAA rating, highest possible, and Kroll Bond Rating Agencies assigned a AA-plus ratings to our new bonds. Fitch and Kroll have provided their ratings for the first time, and they are the highest or the near highest respectively, and I couldn't let that go without actually highlighting that tonight.
Right.
In the audience today, I should, Ms. Selkeld and our dream team is part of the Mark and Victor, part of our financing dream team. So, we appreciate you being here tonight and this POS, the two POS is going forward and what this means to our students and what's happening.
And we also have to thank Martha up in Sacramento because of the law that we were able to pass in Sacramento will save taxpayers quite a bit of money in San Diego.
We'll expect headlines tomorrow.
Yes.
Now, Maureen said it'll come out later on in the week.
Thank you to our underwriters and the whole team working together on this. Appreciate it.
There are no non-agenda.
Do we have to vote?
Please, yeah, please vote. After all that.
We have a 10 o'clock curfew for board meetings.
We convene upstairs.
Okay. No non-agenda board.
We convene upstairs.
They'll convene upstairs.
No.